All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Charlotte City Council June 20th zoning meeting. This is a meeting that we consider those petitions that have been forwarded to the staff for the zoning or changes in our zoning. So with that, I'd like to begin with our first with introductions, and we'll start with our staff joining us that are joining us in person, and then we'll go to the folks that are joining us virtually. So we can go ahead and begin with our city clerk.
Stephanie Kelly, city clerk.
Brandon Brazil, CDOT Development Services Division.
Jake Carpenter, CDOT.
Julie Iselt, Mayor Pro Tem and serving at large.
By Lao, serving as mayor.
Ed Driggs, District 7.
Tarek Bakari, District 6.
Terri Hagler Gray, Senior Assistant to the Attorney.
John Kinley, rezoning staff.
Dave Petten, rezoning manager.
Ms. Samuel.
Kiba Samuel, Chair of Zoning Committee.
Donna Jackson, Office of Constituent Services.
All right, with that, we will begin our meeting with an invocation, and I recognize Ms. Ashmira. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the virtual folks. I'm going to start introductions with Ms. Ashmira.
Good evening, Temple Ashmira, serving you as at large.
Rexton Winston, at large.
Rick Phipps, at large.
Happy Juneteenth, this is Renee Johnson, District 4.
Good evening, happy Juneteenth, everyone. Matt Newton, District 5.
Good evening, Victoria Watlington, District 3.
All right, and now we will begin with our invocation. We recognize that we have this invocation or moment of expression to be done. If you, some people do not have any, I do not have any conviction around faith, and we want to acknowledge that, but tonight we've asked Ms. Ashmira to open a meeting to solemnize our work and discussions this evening. Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This weekend, we had the joy of celebrating Juneteenth and Father's Day. Juneteenth celebrates the struggles and hopes of real freedom, and Father's Day celebrates love, guidance, and strength that father can bring to all our families and our children. Let us hold both celebrations dear to our hearts as we go forth as public servants with the goals of bringing peace, safety, and well-being to all the people and all neighborhoods of Charlotte. May God give us wisdom and guidance. Amen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ashmira. And now if we would stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. As I said, this is our zoning meeting, and tonight the meeting is being held in accordance with applicable law, governing meetings with the city council. We have, you see virtually several council members are joining us, and I wanted to also acknowledge that we have met the requirements for, by law, for access and information. The public and media are available to view, you may have the following options to view this, you can watch it on the government channel, the city's Facebook page, or on the city's YouTube page. We will also have speakers who have signed up join us virtually as well. So we have had our introductions and our pledge of allegiance, and I'll dive right into the explanation of our zoning process. It begins with two applications that are submitted to the staff for review. The applications are either, or what we have, are just two types of items on our agenda, decisions and hearings. The decisions are cases on which we've already held a public hearing, and there will be no further public comment. We will speak among ourselves to make a decision around those decisions. The second item, the type of items that we have are the hearings, and I believe that we have every, anyone that is in the building that wishes to speak that has not signed up, if you would see the city clerk for signing up for your, the item or the petition that you'd like to speak, if you would do that now. We also have a staff presentation first on all of our hearings, and the staff gets to speak around their discussion and what they've learned about the petition. The petitioner and those in favor would get three minutes combined to present their case unless their opponent sign up to speak, and we have several of those tonight. If staff is in opposition, the petitioner gets 10 minutes, and the opponent gets 10 minutes combined. So if you are in a group and you're in opposition to a petition, and there are 10 people signed up, if you would kind of huddle and decide how you want to use those 10 minutes to be most effective, that would work, I think, in your best interest. And so the petitioner always says and gets a two-minute rebuttal in terms of any opposition is expressed. If no one is opposed or signed up to speak, the staff provides a short presentation. We close the public hearing and go to the next item that we would have on the agenda. Our petitions then go to the zoning committee or the planning commission for review and recommendation, and now I'd like to address, ask Ms. Samuel if she would explain the process and introduce any one of the planning commission zoning committee members that are joining us today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, my name is Kiba Samuel. I chair the zoning committee of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Planning Commission. The zoning committee will meet on Tuesday, July 5th at 5:30 PM to discuss, deliberate, and make recommendations on the petitions being heard tonight. That meeting at 5:30 PM on the 5th of July is not a continuation of tonight's public hearing. There is not usually an opportunity for the public to speak unless there is a question or concern that can best be addressed by a member of the public. Members of the public may watch that meeting live via the City of Charlotte's Planning, Design, and Development's YouTube page. Again, my name is Kiba Samuel, Chair of the zoning committee, and I will be with you for the entirety of the evening should you have any questions. Joining us virtually are our fellow planning commission, fellow zoning committee members, Commissioner Sam Spencer, Andrew Blumenthal, Courtney Rhodes, John Hamm, Douglas Welton. Again, Kiba Samuel, Chair of the zoning committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Samuel. And you will recognize, you will raise your hand and be, so that we can recognize any one of the commissioners that would have a question as we are conducting our hearings this evening. So as any, with anything, we have changes since we've had our zoning hearings on the items, and we have some items that we would have for deferral and withdrawal from the agenda that was published and sent out earlier last week. I'd like to ask Mr. Petten if he would go through the deferrals and withdrawals, and if possible, after he does that, we would have a motion by a council member to take action on these items. So, Mr. Petten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The items we have for deferral, some listed in the agenda, some came in after publishing. We've got item number two, which is a withdrawal. That's 2019-009 by Joseph Rhodes. Item number three, 2021-079 Piedmont Capital is a deferral of the decision to July 18th. Item four, 2021-141 by the Drakeford Company, decision deferred until July 18th. Item five, 2021-197 by Crescent Communities, also a deferral for the decision to July. Item six, 2021-209 Coastal Acquisition Entity LLC, deferral to July 18th for decision. Item seven, 2021-219 Lincoln Property Company, deferral till July 18th. Item eight, 2021-238, it's Lenar Carolinas LLC, deferral of the decision till July 18th. Item number nine, 2022-019 is a deferral of the decision to July 18th, and we also, I believe, have three others. Is that correct?
Yes, those are 2021-217, 2021-218, and 2021-225, as advised to me by the representative for petitioners.
That's items number...
All right. We do not have, do we have, do we have a list here? So you are adding to the list?
Yeah, we're going to add three that we were just notified of. Items 13, 12, 13, excuse me, items 12, item 13, and item 15. All petitions by Boulevard Real Estate Advisors, 2021-217, 218, and 225 respectively. And those are deferral of the decision until July as well. Then we have several hearings that have been deferred.
Let us catch up, there's a lot of paper in this exercise, so I just want to make sure that we have, Agenda item number 12 is requested, is added to the motion for deferral.
Yep.
13.
15.
And 15.
And the last decision we have a deferral on is item 21, and that's Mill Creek Residential, and that is 2021-249.
Mr. Petten?
Yes.
There's another deferral apparently. I've just gotten a message, item 31, is that on your list of deferrals?
Who is that from, Mr. Driggs?
That's from Bridget Grant at Morn Van Allen. 21.
Yes, 21.
We have 21.
Yeah, I just announced 21 as well.
So the other three that we added, 12, 13, and 15, who requested those?
The petitioner agent, Mr. Carmichael.
Okay, the petitioner request, made those requests. Okay. Is everybody squared away on the numbers?
I'm seeing a late-breaking deferral on Twitter. Dave, you want to check that?
It seems to be.
Don't pay any attention to him. Do you need a motion to approve?
I need a motion to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was just the decisions. Now we've got some hearings that have been withdrawn and deferred as well. Item 27, 2019-077 is a withdrawal. That was by WPCPLP. Item 28 is a deferral of the hearing to July 18th, that's 2021-237. Items 32, 2021-242 by Robert Doughty, deferred to July 18th. Item 38, 2021-252 by WP East Acquisitions is a deferral of the hearing to July 18th. And the last item for deferral is item 43, and that's 2021-262 CRD Dilworth LLC. Everything except for the two withdrawals is being deferred to July 18th, both hearings and decision items. That's a lengthy list, unless we get some in the next 30 seconds, that should be it.
All right, so we have, we have the deferrals and withdrawals. Okay. All right. We have a motion to accept the staff's list as read, and Mr. Driggs has making that motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Iselt, second that motion?
Second, yep.
Thank you very much. By law, we're required to have a roll call vote because we have some people in the, in the building and some virtual, so I'll begin the roll call vote. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so with that, we have, now go to our first item for discussion. Rezoning petition 2021-112 by Cambridge Properties for approximately 15 acres. It's in District 4. The current zoning is B2. The proposed zoning is mixed-use development, and the zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. All right, so we'll open, do I have a motion to accept the zoning committee recommendation and the analysis or our, what if, our petition, our consistency of our plans, our statement of consistency?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Second, Ashmira.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, I seconded the motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it, we're good. Any discussion? Hearing none, discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is item number 11, which we have changes in the item. I'm going to ask Mr. Petten to read the changes that have occurred since the hearing prior to our vote. This will require seven council members to adopt this motion if we accept the changes. So remember, this is a little bit different because we have a fewer number of people. Instead of it being nine, it's seven. Okay?
Three quarters applies to the use of members.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Petten, if you would read the changes as recommended.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2021-199 had several changes after zoning committee mainly to address some outstanding issues and some other items related to sidewalk location along the project, but changes were that they noted the existing bike lane along North Davidson would be maintained, added a five-foot internal sidewalk to connect to North Davidson Street, notes to specify dedication and fee simple conveyance of all right-of-way to the city before the first CO is issued. Site plan and conditional note, commit to dedicate 30 feet of right-of-way from the road center line. Language to state plan notes specifying all transportation improvements would be approved and constructed before the first CO. Conditional note to specify a two-foot sidewalk utility easement at back of sidewalk would be provided, and also a modification that brings both the sidewalk and building closer towards North Davidson Street while also maintaining our meeting ordinance requirements, and also the proposed type-two modified driveway was changed to a residential drop-curb type-one driveway, and those are the changes that were made. Staff believes that those are minor, were listed to address outstanding issues and do not warrant any additional review by the zoning committee.
Move not to send back.
Sorry, we have a move, move, motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll begin the roll call vote. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item 15 was deferred, and we move to item 16, petition 2021-235 by Coral Reef Investment Properties, approximately 8.6 acres on the east side of Tybola, near the intersection of Tybola Center. It's in District 3. The current zoning is single-family residential. The proposed zoning is multifamily residential. Are the vested year...
They've been removed.
They have been, and with no vested...
No additional vested.
Rights. The zoning committee unanimously supported the petition, as well as the staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion to adopt the petition and accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency as our own?
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, we will have Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That petition passes. Next item is item number 17, petition 2021-240 by Ascent Real Estate Capital for approximately 1.6 acres located in the, near the intersection of Abbey Place and Hedgemore Drive. It's in District 6. The current zoning is mixed-use development conditional, and the proposed zoning is mixed-use development optional. The zoning committee voted unanimously, the staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion to adopt the petition and accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency as our own?
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, we will have Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number 12 was deferred, 13 deferred, 14, that takes us to 15. Item 14 was deferred as well? Is the Selwyn property is not?
No, 12, 13, and 15, so 14 wedged in between there is moving forward.
Got it. Okay, so item 14, petition 2021-223 by Selwyn Property Group for approximately 2.4 acres located on Presley north of Billy Graham. It's in District 3. The current zoning is multifamily residential. The proposed zoning is general industrial conditional, and the zoning committee voted unanimously to approve this petition. Staff recommends an approval as well. Do I have a motion to adopt this recommendation and maintain the consistency statement as our own?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Watlington and Mr. Driggs? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All right, we'll begin. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item 15 was deferred, and we move to item 16, petition 2021-235 by Coral Reef Investment Properties, approximately 8.6 acres on the east side of Tybola, near the intersection of Tybola Center. It's in District 3. The current zoning is single-family residential. The proposed zoning is multifamily residential. Are the vested year...
They've been removed.
They have been, and with no vested...
No additional vested.
Rights. The zoning committee unanimously supported the petition, as well as the staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion to adopt the petition and accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency as our own?
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, we will have Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That petition passes. Next item is item number 17, petition 2021-240 by Ascent Real Estate Capital for approximately 1.6 acres located in the, near the intersection of Abbey Place and Hedgemore Drive. It's in District 6. The current zoning is mixed-use development conditional, and the proposed zoning is mixed-use development optional. The zoning committee voted unanimously, the staff recommends approval. The zoning committee voted unanimously. The staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion to accept the zoning committee's recommendation and the statement of consistency as our own? Mr. Petten?
Yeah, sorry. We did, we're notified of a change right as the meeting was started to this petition. So it's not in the materials that we've got, but I've got the change here to read in, to be voted on. It'd be a change after zoning committee. The only change that's being made is to reduce the requested unit count by 12 units. That would end up with a total of 240 requested residential units. Staff believes that's a minor change and does not have any, any need to go back to the zoning committee.
Move not to send back to zoning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second not to send it back to the zoning committee. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now we go to the main motion to adopt the petition and accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency as our own. Do I have a motion?
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, I just want to make a note here. This is something that unfortunately is the way that, in a big city, things work. Where you're cruising along for several months, you think that there is no opposition and then suddenly, within a couple days of the hearing, and then for myself, last couple hours, you realize there are some neighbors that have some material concerns. So, you know, it's unfortunate, but it definitely happens. And I just want to make a couple comments on their behalf. One, this is a regional activity center over there around Montford, as you guys know. We've talked about it a lot. We've approved some pretty material rezonings there over the decade. And this has staff approval. It has unanimous zoning committee support. It's in a regional activity center. It's the most intense type of neighborhood that we have. And it's already by right has the ability to have 150 apartment units that are there. We know that. That's kind of the table stakes. They've come forth, they've requested 252 units because they need that density. And we, we need ultimately, as we know, the density for housing, for office, for industrial, because that's one side of the coin of what we're deeply looking for. They've also made Greenway commitments to Parks and Rec as part of this rezoning. And all in all, it looks like a very good project that will get us something we need there. On the other hand, though, you know, especially in areas like this, we have neighbors who live there. And I've talked to several today who've lived there for decades. And it's a tough balancing act for us to get what we need on a macro level while keep being cognizant of the neighbors who live there and have, you know, have, have raised their kids for almost 30 years in one spot and are seeing this happen around them. And for me, the punchline is, we are not investing, particularly in my district, but all over the entire city, in our infrastructure that is our part of this equation. If we're going to do this high intense development in all parts of town, we need to, we need to follow behind with the water and sewer and traffic infrastructure investments that are desperately needed. Because it's one of two options. We can call for a moratorium and say, we're not in the business of doing rezonings and development anymore. Or we can get to work on our part of the equation, so long as developers aren't making it worse with what they're doing. They're mitigating their own impacts. And I think it's the latter. It has to be the latter. We have to get into that space. These neighbors over there, very specifically, are very concerned about congestion, and rightly so. And we're not investing at the pace we need to, to do all that. But again, it's not at the developer's footprint, but I was lucky enough to go to them within the last hour and just say, look, as we're trying to solve for this, there's a couple conversations we need to have that can be tweaked down, down the road in the next couple weeks on egress, you know, strategies and things like that. But for right now, they were willing to remove, reduce this by 12 units. It's not a huge material number, but it's 5%. It'll take, you know, a number of trips off the road each day. And this is a lot easier to do when we have a lot of time. But it was the best we could do for right now. And I appreciate everyone's working with me to make that happen. So I just would ask that we support this. And remember, if we're going to be in this business of high density, high units, high, high, high development to solve the big equation of housing and everything we need, we need to be investing just as aggressively in the infrastructure around that, because it's brutal for the people who are stuck living there with this happening around them.
All right, any further discussion? Ms. Watlington?
Yes, I just wanted to also highlight that. That is absolutely how I feel in regards to us continuing to approve high density without having the sound infrastructure plan to keep up with it. I just, it's irresponsible. I do think that moratorium as a tool, as a temporary tool for us to get to a place where we've got a plan, it could potentially be a wise investment. Certainly, inasmuch as it doesn't make a lot of sense to keep building without an infrastructure plan, it wouldn't necessarily make sense to just do a moratorium and leave it that way. But I think it is absolutely a tool that can be used to give us some time to figure out what we need to do. Because anything short of doing both is really doing a disservice to our residents. And so I do have a question on this one. I'd like to understand, and we're appreciating that there was a few late-hour changes or things that people were made aware. I'd like to understand what we're getting from a community investment. I see the planning staff review here with a couple of items. Is there anything else from a community benefit standpoint that is coming to the area, whether it's affordable housing, whether it is, I see urban, urban open space, one square foot for every hundred square foot of building area. That feels a little bit small. I'd just like to understand a little bit more about what, what should the neighbors be excited about getting in exchange for this rezoning?
Is that question directed to Mr. Petten or Mr. Bakari?
Bakari can take it.
Mr. Bakari?
Great. Well, as your zoning staff expert, Ms. Watlington, I'm glad to respond to that. Again, this was not deeply on my radar because we had done it a couple months ago. We had looked, we had made a call for action, and there really didn't seem to be any pushback. So it generally checked several boxes of material, housing, and, and square footage and density that we deeply need in a regional activity center. And so when you don't hear a lot of community feedback, you make the assumption that after all the notifications and meetings have gone out, people have listened and they don't mind what they see. And as I started with, that wasn't the case. So as I've been able to dive into this, obviously, I would first and foremost answer your question with, the number of units and the density is deeply what we need. And the infrastructure is clearly the downside that is our job and we need to get better at. But the Greenway commitment to Parks and Rec as part of this and that, that Greenway connection going, what do we call that, the Brandywine to Tybola Connector, I believe, that is a marquee aspect for our community, connecting the Cross Charlotte Trail. And for them to have made a commitment and then to have density on that, to me, that, that alongside the density is, is what I was looking at. Dave, I don't know if you'd add anything or the petitioner themselves, but like I said, pound for pound, this has all the makings of what we need. It's just when I hear the community feedback, you know, despite how bad you need it, you hear the micro aspects of people's lives and you just want to jump to action and try to do something.
Right. Dave, is there anything in the way of affordable commitments on this one? Just curious.
Affordable, yes.
I don't believe so.
No, there's no commitments in there.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of what my colleagues have said. And I've said for, feels like years now. We say this every month. But, and I said before, the buck stops with us. We know that we have overcrowded schools, lack of affordable housing, increased crime, lack of adequate police staffing, the infrastructure, the traffic, the effect on the stormwater. So, you know, why are we afraid to talk about a moratorium? And if it's not a moratorium, perhaps even a 30-day deferral. Let's, and Mayor, if you would consider maybe December, instead of having a zoning meeting, let's have a six-hour strategy session. Once the new councilors come on and have about three meetings under their belt, and then that will give the staff something to bring to us in, at the strategy session. But we cannot keep doing the same thing over and over and expect something different. We, we have to, as a council, be willing to, to pump the brakes. The buck stops with us. So I won't be supporting this petition for that reason. And at some point, I just, I believe that we have to do something. This is a problem everywhere in our city. And we understand the density, but we're planning for, for people who are coming. We need to manage for the, for the individuals and the residents that are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, we've already taken up a lot of time here. Apologies, but it's important. Again, the moratoriums don't work for one reason, which is, we're waiting around on ourselves to act, right? So, I mean, like, it's, it's up to us. So I think, rather than talking moratorium in a time when we desperately need as aggressive density and, and development projects as possible, isn't the right thing. What we should be doing, and I would propose to you, Mayor, to think about, is, you know, we have committees for the most important topics. And while this has potential touchpoints to some, we should have an infrastructure investment committee. And that committee should be looking at the budget, deeply connected to the budget committee, and coming up with aggressive transformational plans to invest in our infrastructure. Again, having a moratorium for a month or a year doesn't matter. If we're waiting on ourselves and we still haven't acted. So I think the best, most pragmatic way we could start moving forward is have a serious mandate to sit in a committee kind of format and get this done.
So I, I think that these are great suggestions and we should consider them all. Mr. Driggs is working with the Infrastructure Commission that was appointed by all of the council members. And their report was to come forward when they had their recommendations as a citizens committee about what we would do. And I know that Mr. Driggs has had at least one meeting that I attended with him, as well as the Mayor Protem. And I think that that would be our committee that would bring us the citizens.
Hey, I'm on the Zoom for the public hearing, but I got a little ways before we get called.
Someone's got their microphone on. Could you please mute?
I did. He, he did not see any reason why September 30th.
Be careful what you say.
One of the speakers, you have your microphone on. Could you please mute?
He, he.
Mr. Gallagher, would you please put your, put mic, your mic on mute?
Matt Gallagher.
All right. Mr. Gallagher, please. Thank you. So I think that what we could do is actually begin to think about this because we really did recognize that infrastructure, along with our NEST Committee on Affordable Housing, to give those commissions the opportunity to come back and we can check and see where that leads us and what's next, what is our next step. So with that, we have the motion on the floor. Is there any other comment on this item, on this petition? All right, hearing no other comment, we'll start with Ms. Johnson.
No.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
No.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
The motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item number 18. And I do believe in this item, we also have changes that I'd like to ask Mr. Petten to explain, as well as listen and then have a motion by the council. It is petition 2021-241 by Young Kim for approximately 1.8 acres at the intersection of Sardone and W.T. Harris. It's in District Four. The current zoning is office conditional and the proposed zoning is multifamily residential conditional. Were the vested rights removed from the items?
They were, yes.
Please remove the vested rights from that motion or in your book that you have today.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, Mr. Petten, if you'll give us the changes?
Sure. Three general changes made. Mainly, the first one was to the language regarding grading and grade transition in the 25-foot undisturbed buffer. That's the area between the buffer and the 50-foot rear yard. Notes were added to say it would be minimized to the greatest extent possible. The grade transition in that area would be minimized to the greatest extent practical and with the intent of preserving trees in that area. If any grading would result in slopes that would exceed a three-to-one ratio, the petitioner would construct additional support to maintain that grade and also trees and vegetation within that buffer. The last note that was modified was the fence that's along the portion of the site that would have joined the Morrison Place community would extend to the area of the entrance gate from Morrison Place. The exact location of the fence would be coordinated with the Morrison Place HOA, but will not extend beyond the property line of the petitioner's site. And that coordination will allow for Morrison Place to construct or extend the fence onto their site to connect their entrance gate at their cost if they choose to do so. Staff believes the changes are minor and a result of coordination with the community and do not warrant additional review by the zoning committee.
Do I have a motion to accept the staff's recommendation not to send it back to the zoning committee?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
All right, with that, now we go to the agenda item. Do we have a motion to accept the zoning committee's unanimous recommendation and the staff's recommendation? And do we accept the zoning commission's stated, statement of consistency as our own? Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Ms. Johnson and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to say something.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the petitioner of this development. He worked closely with the residents. I don't know if you all recall, there was some opposition last month. And we all met at the site and, and he listened very intently. That's why there were changes after the meeting. So I just want to thank Mr. or the developer for working closely with the residents, listening and, and adding benefit to the, to the developer to help raise this bar in District Four. So thank you. And I'll be supporting.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item number 19, petition 2021-244 by Juarez Silva for approximately one acre on the south side of Cindy Lane near Bowline Drive. It's in District Two. The current zoning is single-family residential. The proposed zoning is light industrial. The zoning committee voted four to two to recommend approval of this petition and staff recommends approval. Do I have a motion to accept the majority vote of the zoning committee and, and their statement of consistency as our own and approve this petition?
Mr. Gray is not here, right?
He is not here. He's out of town.
Ah, okay.
He's out of town.
I'll make a motion, yeah.
So moved, yeah.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Dr., Ms. Mayor Protem and a second by Mr. Driggs. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion.
Yes. Yes, I have a.
Mr. Phipps, did you say you had a comment or a question?
Yes, I do.
All right, Mr. Phipps?
I would not be supporting this petition for reasons similar to the zoning committee inasmuch as I don't feel comfortable with the I-1 district adjacent to single-family and directly across the street from a subdivision under construction right now. So I would be voting no on this petition. Thanks.
All right. Any, any further discussion? Ms. Eschmira, you, are you, I see your hand, but I didn't know if you were trying to, Ms. Eschmira?
No, I'm good. I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, hearing no further questions, we'll have a vote on the motion to approve this petition and adopt the statement of consistency of the majority of the zoning committee crafted. All right, Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Newton? Ms. Watlington?
No.
Mayor Protem?
Um, yes. I just want to make a note that I don't know if anyone had notified the, Mr. Petten, the petitioner, was he notified of this item tonight?
Yeah, he would have received a link to participate as a speaker.
Okay, because if this is not supported, what, what is the consequence of not supporting this petition?
Ily rezoning would be, you know, denied. The zoning would stay R4 and they'd have options to potentially. The zoning would stay R-4, and they'd have options to potentially consider a different district down the road. Wouldn't be able to be rezoned to I-1. They could build by right, or they could just pursue the project in another location.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course, Ms. Ashmira.
Yeah, is petitioner online or in the room?
Not that I'm aware of.
He is online. I'm sorry, because I was talking to a media member.
Oh, he's on line. Ms. Jackson just said he's online.
Ms. Bean, can you move?
Yes, so I would like to ask him a question. Would he like to defer this petition?
Miss, I think we --
Based on the --
Too late.
Ms. Ashmira, we can't do this since we've already closed the public hearing, as well as we've begun -- we have a motion on the floor, so he cannot be asked to respond.
Well, I would like to make a substitute motion, then, to defer this petition.
We have to go through the motion that's on the floor. We've had this conversation before. You can do a substitute prior to the vote, but the vote has already started, and we have three noes and one yes. All right?
Ms. Can I also point out for anybody who hasn't really seen this, this is in the middle of an already industrial area, so this isn't -- it's not -- even though it's originally zoned single-family, the area around it is all industrial. So, if that makes a difference to anybody.
I'd also add, Madam Mayor, we have got to tighten up around here because, like, this is an industry, and we're making snap decisions where we have to -- if we're going to do things like this, we need to communicate with the developers so they have opportunities to change the course or anything. There were, on my rezoning, multiple no votes, and the first time you guys have heard about it was literally 15 minutes ago. So, it doesn't mean we can't decline things. It means we need to tighten up because this is an important industry for us, and we are not doing it justice by this kind of approach.
We want to get Ms. Gray.
We've tightened up. Point of order. We're in the middle of a vote.
Ms. Hagler-Grey, would you like to comment, please?
Yes, and we've had this issue come up before, so you do have to go through with the vote on the motion to approve. If the motion to approve does not pass, then there needs to be a motion to deny the petition.
Could there be a motion to defer as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Ashmira, you're next on the vote.
Yes, so we will move forward with this. If this doesn't get passed, I will make a substitute motion to defer it. With that, I might --
We can't -- okay, I was -- okay. Ms. Ashmira, your vote?
Yes, I said yes.
Mr. Phipps?
No.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, so we have one, two, we have five. Oh, my gosh, it's one, two, three, four, five yeses, and one, two, three, four noes. So, the motion fails.
I would like to make a substitute motion to defer this petition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer this petition. Is there any discussion?
That's not a substitute motion. It's just an original motion.
It is a new motion. It is a new motion to defer this item. Do we have a motion? Any discussion? All right, a motion for deferral of this item. We'll begin with Ms. Johnson.
I'll vote yes, but I have a question. Let me just ask the question. So, does this happen when something is denied by council? We can later, we can subsequently make a substitute motion or a motion to defer the item? Is that for any --
In the same meeting, we can.
Okay.
No, she's asking for any -- can we bring -- can we come back to that? I'm not sure. Ms. Gray specializes in our zoning materials. I think you're asking universally, could we do this? Is that what you're saying, Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, well, yeah, but, yeah, and zoning. So, I just want to clarify what's going on here, kind of a point of order.
I know.
Because the motion did not pass, it did not have six, we can take another motion, which is what Ms. Hagler-Grey just told us on this item. I can't answer the universal question. We would have to get our city attorney's office to do that later. So, right now, we're on this motion to defer.
Mayor, what?
Yes, Mr. Winston. Are you -- is this a discussion of the deferral?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Winston?
So, I think the answer, Ms. Johnson, is that since the --
We can't discuss this topic. We're not addressing Ms. Johnson's question for the universal answer, Mr. Winston.
It's not. She was asking a process question. What is happening here?
Mr. Winston, I have ruled that the city attorney's office will respond to Ms. Johnson's question, that we need to have that response from the city attorney's office with some research on it. So, let's get -- let's go ahead and take this motion because we've already started. I think Ms. Johnson said yes for the deferral, but she had a question, and we've addressed that question. So, we'll go ahead and continue. Ms. Johnson?
Well, Mayor, look, can I also say that that --
Ms. Johnson, we have started the roll call vote. We will refer your question to the city attorney's office for research, which Ms. Hagler-Grey has agreed to do. All of us have agreed to do this. So, Mr. Newton, on the deferral?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
The motion for deferral passes. The next item on our agenda is item number 20, petition 2021-245 by C.C. Fund for approximately 1.4 acres on the south side of Carter Avenue and on Woodward and Vanderbilt Road east of Statesville. The current zoning is general industrial. The proposed zoning is mixed-use development, and the zoning committee unanimously recommends approval as well as the staff. Do I have a motion to accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency and approve this petition?
So moved.
Mr. Driggs, do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem, any discussion? This is in District 1. All right, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
The next item is item 21, petition 2021- -- we have deferral on 21, so we go to the next one, 22, rezoning petition 21-251 by Delray Ventures for approximately 13 acres on the east side of Mallet Creek and the Governor Hunt Road. It's in District 4. The current zoning is single-family residential. The proposed zoning is urban residential conditional. The zoning committee voted unanimously to approve, and the staff as well. Do I have a motion to accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency and adopt this petition?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to thank the developer on this petition also for working closely with the residents, so, and making the concessions. So, I will be supporting.
All right, well, let's go ahead and get to the roll call vote. There are no other people who has their hands up. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, the next item is item number 23, rezoning petition 2021-253 by Flywheel Group, approximately 15 and a half acres southeast side of North Tryon, east of Matheson. It's in District 1. The current zoning is general industrial. The proposed zoning is transit-oriented development, neighborhood center. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Do I have a motion to accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency and adopt this petition? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Mayor, we'll start. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The next decision is item 24, petition 2021-255 by Bob Shelton for approximately 1 and 3/4 acres on the west side of Statesville near the intersection of Spectre Drive. It's in District 2. The current zoning is general industrial conditional. The proposed zoning is general industrial. The zoning committee voted five to one to approve this petition, and staff recommends approval as well. So, do I have a motion to accept the --
So moved.
-- zoning committee's majority recommendation and adopt this petition?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no dis --
Question.
Who has a question?
Watlington.
Ms. Watlington?
Yeah, so I see here that Commissioner Spencer noted that this is an industrial use. He does a pretty good job of calling out these industrial that allow, like, fuel storage and different things like that. I've got a question in regards to what exactly would be allowed. Has there been any notes from the petitioner as to whether or not fuel storage and automobile service stations would be allowed on this item? I realize that it's conventional, but my question is, have they made any affirmative statement?
Ms. Gray, this is a conventional petition. Is this a question that is appropriate for this petition?
Ms. Watlington, could you repeat your question so that Ms. Gray can hear it?
I just want to know if the petitioner has made any affirmations as to whether or not there would be fuel storage or automobile service station.
I think Mr. Petten can ask, but since it's conventional, the petitioner actually should not be making any representations about what will happen at the site.
Right, but I'm just asking if they did.
No.
Thanks.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. I'm sorry.
I asked a similar question to Mr. Petten this afternoon, and he did provide some explanation as to the comment by Mr. Spencer, and if he could elaborate on it, I think he could clarify the discussion.
It's not appropriate.
Just to summarize the minority opinion from the zoning committee chair, Commissioner Spencer, he just stated that conventional industrial is not something that is a really appropriate designation, and our industrial zoning designation is outdated and inappropriate and has more noxious uses than he was comfortable moving forward that are allowed under the I-2 district. So, that was the summary of the minority opinion.
All right, so we are now prepared for the vote. Do I -- I'm going to begin the roll call voting. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
The motion passes. Our next item again is a conventional petition, petition 2022-011 by Starmount Healthcare Management for approximately 8 acres located on the northwest intersection of North Tryon, West Sugar Creek. It's in District 1. The current zoning is multifamily residential. The proposed zoning is institutional. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Do you have -- do I have a motion to accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency as our own and to approve this petition?
So moved.
We have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll begin the roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
That motion, that decision passes unanimously. Our next petition is conventional petition, petition 2022-2021 by Crossroads Corporation for affordable housing and community development for approximately 2.3 acres located on the northwest intersection of Marnie Avenue and Alpha Street. It's in District 1. The current zoning is single-family residential. The proposed zoning is urban residential. The zoning committee and the staff recommend approval of this petition. Do I have a motion to accept the zoning committee's statement of consistency as our own and approve this petition?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs? All right, that is our last decision of the evening. So thank you all for your patience and the questions that you've asked and addressed. So now we're going to move to the portion of our agenda for the public hearings that many of you are sitting and waiting for. So thank you very much. I believe our first one is item number 29, Mr. Petten. Petition 2021-139 by Boulevard at 1800 Central for approximately six tenths or seven tenths of an acre located at the southeast intersection of Central Avenue and Nandina Street east of the plazas in District One. The current zoning is general business with a pedestrian overlay. The proposed zoning is general business with pedestrian overlay optional. The staff currently recommends approval of this petition, and in this case, the staff gives a brief presentation, and I'm going to pull out my speakers list, and we do have a speaker, Mr. Carmichael, four, so you will have three minutes, Mr. Carmichael, after the staff presentation.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. 2021-139, it's just under .7 acres on Central Ave at the location with Nandina Street and the plaza. Current zoning, as mentioned, is B2-PED. The proposed zoning is B2-PED optional. It's under a PEDscape overlay with an optional provision. The adapted future land use currently is the Plaza Central PEDscape Plan that recommends office, retail, multifamily, up to 12 dwelling units per acre. As we're all aware, the 2040 policy map goes into effect on July 1st, so just referencing those throughout the hearings this evening, this one is shown as a community activity center. Again, that will be effective on July 1st. The proposal itself is really just for one optional provision in the pet overlay district, and that would be to reduce the minimum or set the minimum parking standards to one space per 600 square feet for all non-residential uses. This would include eating, drinking, and entertainment establishments. Parking requirements for religious institutions, hotels, and residential uses shall all be governed by the ordinance. So that's the only condition that's part of this petition, and again, it's just part of the optional provisions being requested. Staff does recommend approval of the petition. It is consistent with the currently adopted Plaza Central PEDscape Plan for recommendations of office, retail, and multifamily uses on the site, and we'll be happy to take any questions following the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two speakers, John Carmichael and Chris Branch, who have, there's no opposition, so you have a total of three minutes.
I see. I think I have a PowerPoint, but I'll be very brief. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, and members of City Council and the zoning committee, my name's John Carmichael, and I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Boulevard at 1800 Central LLC. Chris Branch is with me tonight. Next slide. The site contains about .695 acres and is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Central Avenue and Nandina Street. Next slide. This is just an aerial of the site. You can see when this is taken, the building that's currently on the site was under construction. Next slide. These are, this is just a series of pictures of the existing building that was recently constructed. This building would remain. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And next slide. Thank you. So that's the existing building that would remain. The sole purpose of this request is to modify the parking requirement for eating, drinking, and entertainment establishments, as Mr. Petten stated. That's the only optional provision. I will say that we had a hearing on this petition on December 20 of 2021, and at that time, the petitioner was requesting that the site be rezoned to the Todd NC zoning district, and the sole purpose of that rezoning request was to modify the parking requirement as well. The planning staff recommended approval of that petition at that time, and there was no neighborhood opposition. The petitioner had met with representatives of the Plaza Midwood Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee and the Commonwealth Morningside Neighborhood Association to discuss the request. Nevertheless, after the public hearing, the petitioner amended the request to ask that the site be rezoned to B2-PED-O. This was done after conversations with Councilmember Eggleston and the planning staff, and the reason for changing the request was just uncertainty regarding the timing of the link's goal line, so it felt that maybe Todd NC was a little early. So after we amended the petition, I emailed representatives of the Plaza Midwood Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee, the Commonwealth Morningside Neighborhood Association, and the Plaza Midwood Merchants Association to advise them of the amendment and what we were asking for, and also to invite them to the community meeting. In their return emails to me, they expressed no concerns regarding the request or the amendment. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. And this optional provision is just to assist an existing tenant on the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Mr. Branch was with you, Mr. Carmichael? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions from councilmembers?
Move to close.
Second. Any discussion in the motion and hearing none. Ms. Johnson, move to close the hearing.
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Watlington, yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
I hope one day we can get rid of the roll call meeting listing. I feel like I've kind of gotten to be robotic in some ways. Okay, so that closes out our first hearing. Our second hearing is petition, agenda item number 30, petition 2021-211 by Legacy Construction Unlimited for approximately 3.5 acres located on the west side of Siegel Avenue, Van Everie Street. It's in Belmontes and District One. The current zoning is general business conditional. The proposed zoning is mixed-use development, optional, and again, if you remove the five-year vested rights from the notes in your agenda that you received earlier this, last week. The staff recommends approval of the petition upon resolution of issues related to transportation and site and urban design. Mr. Petten and we have Mr. Ferguson to speak to this item for this petition. So you'll have three minutes, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Petten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2021-211, .35 acres on Siegel Avenue, Van Everie Street. The current zoning is I-2, and the proposed zoning is for UR2 conditional. The adopted future land use is from the Belmont Area Revitalization Plan that recommends multifamily uses up to 22 dwelling units per acre for the site. Also, as we mentioned earlier, just to reference, the site is shown as a neighborhood 2, place type on the 2040 policy map effective on July 1, next, July 1, 2022, which will be just in a few weeks here. The proposal for this petition is up to 10 single-family attached townhouse units, up to two buildings at a density of about 28.6 dwelling units per acre. Maximum building height would be 40 feet. Does propose a minimum five-foot sidewalk and eight-foot wide planting strip along Van Everie and McAden Street frontages. Notes that wall-facing Siegel Avenue, that shielding the private drive, would be constructed of similar materials as the primary structure, and also softened with low shrubs and enhanced landscaping. Eight-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planting strip is being proposed along Siegel Avenue and also has architectural commitments for primary building materials. That would be wood and/or hardy board. Secondary building materials may include things like brick, natural stone, stucco, cementous siding, et cetera. Does prohibit exterior building materials for vinyl siding, excluding those things like handrails, windows, soffits, or door trim. Also, concrete masonry units that are not architecturally finished would be a prohibited exterior building material as well. Corridor end units would also have a porch or stoop that wraps around the front of the side of the unit. Also provide a blank wall provision limiting the maximum expanse to 10 feet. Stoops and porches will form also a predominant feature of the building design and shall be located along Van Everie Street and/or Siegel Ave as applicable. Also, private open space will be met by rooftop terraces, balconies, and other means that would comply with the zoning ordinance definition of private open space. The staff does recommend approval of this petition. Have some outstanding issues related to transportation, site, and urban design to work through. As mentioned, it's inconsistent with the Belmont Revitalization Area Plan for multifamily uses up to 22, but just a slight increase at about 28. Staff feels that's a moderate increase inconsistent with some of the redevelopment we've seen in this corridor. So be happy to take any questions following the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ferguson, I'm assuming that Mr. McCray is supportive cast for you, Mr. Ferguson. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I lost you on audio.
I'm sorry. Mr. Ferguson, you have Mr. McCray as well?
Yes, yes, I do, Mayor.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Councilman Committee, Russell Ferguson. I'm here with Khalid McCray of Legacy Construction, right to the left. We've got a quick presentation here. Want to thank staff for working with us. We do believe we've kind of reached resolution of all the outstanding issues. We'll be removing the vested rights. This is a change from I-2, so it's currently still industrial. This little portion of Siegel used to be industrial, going over to urban residential 2, conditional. Think this makes sense in the context. As Dave mentioned, it's a little bit more dense than the older area plan, but I think it's in line with the future plans for July. It's also in line with the community update with the Belmont Community Association, and the Belmont Community Association is supporting this petition as of last week. Next slide, please. Just an overview. I think one of the important things to note, lots of pedestrian improvements here, and removing a curb cut from Siegel to better improve the existing bike lane and pedestrian corridor that's happening here directly across Van Everie, Catty Corner across Siegel, are all attached single-family homes as you go up towards Piedmont and Temps Street. There is a large single-family home development that's filled in this area next to the traditional single-family area of Belmont. Next slide, please. This is a slide from the Belmont, the community update of the city's plan. This was done by the neighborhood, but I don't believe adopted officially. The arrow is kind of pointing there. You see this is an intense mixed-use corridor. Next slide, please. In general, lots of projects like this, it has the same, brings additional residential units in an efficient way, and here in a place that makes sense, hence staff support and neighborhood support. It's pretty much in line with the future plans and a little bit more than the past, but this area plan's quite, has a little bit of age on it. Continues to streetscape, and I think we've got everything, everything resolved and outstanding issues, so we're here to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for the time and your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the staff or the petitioner? Hearing no questions.
Close.
Do I have a motion to close and a second? So we'll begin any discussion. The motion to close does not require discussion, so Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Watlington, yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eszmera?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston? Mr. Winston? Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is item 31, petition 2021-2013 by Goldberg Companies, approximately 42.8 acres located on the south side of Pineville Matthews Road, east of Hugh Forest Road, west of Raverdy Lane. It's in District 7. The current zoning is multifamily residential conditional. The proposed zoning is multifamily residential conditional with a site plan amendment. The staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues of transportation, technical revisions related to labeling, and open space commitment. So we have a presentation by the staff, and in this case, we do have speakers, and there is an opposition. The staff will make a presentation. The petitioner gets 10 minutes. The opposition gets 10 minutes, and my understanding is that our opposition, Mr. McVane will represent the petitioner, and any other, Mr. McVane?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and Mr. Brock?
Brock.
Brock, thank you, will represent the opposition, and then we'll open the floor for questions. So if we will begin with Mr. Petten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2021-213, it's just under 43 acres on Pineville Matthews Road and Hugh Forest Road. Property is currently zoned R-12 MF conditional. The proposed zoning is to amend that conditional plan, maintain the R-12 MF, but do a site plan amendment to a portion of the site, the portion that's kind of closest half of the site over towards Hugh Forest. The South District Plan does recommend multifamily for the site, and also the site is shown as a neighborhood 2 on the 2040 policy map effective on July 1. The proposal is to increase the site for, there's 66 units in Area A, which is shown in the area there, kind of on the left of the site in white. They want to remove the 66 units that are in place there and replace those with 300 new units. That would then end up to total 500 units across the entirety of the site. The 200 existing units in Area B on the right-hand side would remain. Building height for the new units in Area A would be capped at 48 feet at the front building line. They would have a minimum of five electric vehicle charging stations. 75-foot setback from Hugh Forest Road and Pineville Matthews Road would be maintained for existing vegetation and the berm, except as necessary to install the proposed access on Hugh Forest Road. The 100-foot buffer along the southern property line within Area A, the outer 50 will remain undisturbed, and then 200 feet of an undisturbed buffer will be maintained along the eastern property line in Area B. Do have architectural standards being proposed for new buildings in Area A. That would be related to exterior building facade materials, minimum building frontage, massing, blank wall provisions, roof design, and screening. Also, a minimum 10,000 square feet of improved open space would be provided within Area A. Minimum of two improved open space areas adjacent to the proposed 12-foot multi-use path would include features such as seating, hardscape elements, lighting, watering stations, et cetera. Also, a number of transportation mitigations were identified in the traffic impact study, which would include new and expanded turn lanes, limiting through movements at Echo Forest Drive, and also pedestrian crossings and ramps being provided at some of the major intersections. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. We do have outstanding issues to resolve related to transportation and some technical revisions related to labeling and open space commitment. As mentioned, it is consistent with the South District Plan, and we'll be happy with, to take any questions that you may have following the petitioner's presentation, as well as presentation from the public. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McVane, ten minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, members of the zoning committee, Keith McVane with Moore Van Allen, Jeff Brown of our firm, and I are assisting Goldberg Companies, Inc. on this rezoning petition. With me online tonight, representing the petitioner is Eric Bell, Ryan Linker, and Norman Glazer with GCI, Inc., as well as Laura Reed with Kimberly Horn. She's our traffic engineer. Want to thank Dave and the planning department for their assistance with this petition. We will work with them closely to address the remaining issues. I also want to thank the residents of Hugh Forest and Beverly Crest for their willingness to meet with us and let us have a conversation about the proposal. We appreciate their time. We've met with them early, starting last December, and have met again as late as today. A lot of the changes we have made to the plan are trying to address the concerns that we heard from the residents, and so we'll focus our attention on our presentation on those changes, and then be glad to answer your questions. I do want to turn the presentation over. Next slide, please. I do want to turn the presentation over quickly to Eric Bell with GCI, just to give you a little bit of background on their company, and then I'll quickly run through the presentation, and then happy to answer questions. Eric?
Thanks, Keith. Good evening. I'm one of the principals of the petitioner, Goldberg Companies. GCI is a family-owned real estate company that for the last 70 years has been in the business of building, owning, and managing apartments and office buildings. We're here tonight to discuss the redevelopment of one of our projects, Legacy Arboretum, which was originally built in 1995, and we acquired it in 2005, and I'm not going to go into any of the details of the petition. I'm going to let the team do that, but we're going to remain here to answer any questions that come up.
Thank you, Eric. Next slide, please. So what, when it came clear to us in the early meetings with the residents that there were four general areas of concern from the residents on Hugh Forest and Beverly Crest regarding this request. It fell into what we broadly characterize as three or four areas. One was traffic impact on the intersection of Hugh Forest and 51, which is also the main access to four neighborhoods on Hugh Forest, and the result of that, or the, associated with that traffic impact was the additional of an access point on Hugh Forest that is required by the subdivision regulations, a connection that we would be willing to remove if not required by the subdivision regulations. The other concerns regarded buffers and building height along Hugh Forest and the southern property line, and then finally, it was changes, which really are summarized by what I just mentioned, changes to the previously approved plan for this site that was approved in 1990 by the county commissioners and established the R-12 MF zoning. We did take some time and delayed the public hearing on this petition to work with Department of Transportation on the traffic technical memorandum. We did that after our community meeting with the residents, where they expressed a number of concerns regarding what hours of the day the peak traffic occurred out here. We are very close to, next slide, we are very close to Providence High School. In fact, the current main entrance to the community at Echo Forest, next slide, please, which is the only access to the existing community, lines up with the access to Providence High, the main access to Providence High. So we did a traffic technical memorandum that looked at four peak hours, the AM and PM peak hour associated with access to the school, ingress and egress from the school, the AM and PM hours for the commuter traffic, the normal AM and PM peak hours that are studied, and that study revealed several improvements at both Echo Forest and Hugh Forest that the petitioner has committed to do. One of the commitments, as I think Dave mentioned it, was a median at the Echo Forest Drive, which will prevent through movements from the multifamily community to the high school and vice versa. That hopefully will help, in addition to other improvements associated at that intersection, will help alleviate the congestion that is currently being experienced on Highway 51 when folks go to school. It backs up Highway 51 to Hugh Forest, which is the main access point, like I mentioned, to a number of the communities in the, on Hugh, well, all the communities on Hugh Forest. Next slide, please. Land use wise, Dave mentioned the 2040 plan. It does call for neighborhood 2. Next slide, please. This is the old conditional plan from 1990. It prohibited access to Hugh Forest. It did have substantial buffers on the perimeter. We are trying to maintain as many of those as we can. Next slide, please. To address the other concern, which was buffer and height, the petitioner maintains a 75-foot buffer along Hugh Forest and Highway 51, and 100-foot buffer along the southern property line. The buildings are set back from Hugh Forest additionally, and the petitioner has committed to add additional vegetation to the 75-foot buffer along Hugh Forest by transplanting materials from within the site to that buffer itself, so some of the large existing trees that are part of the redevelopment area will be moved to the buffer. The petitioner also, this is a commitment we're making tonight, will lower the building height of Building 1, which is currently a four-story building with a maximum height, as Dave mentioned, of 48 feet. We will lower that building height to three stories, and with a maximum height, we believe somewhere between 36 and 38 feet, we'll confirm that on our revised plan. That also has an additional effect of reducing the number of total units proposed by 22. So we're now a net addition of 212 units, or a total of 278 units, new units, with the addition of the 200 that remain, for a total of 478 units, a density that's just above 11 units to the acre, so below the R-12 density. We are also, and I'm going to turn the presentation over quickly to Laura in a minute, but we also want to point out that we are continuing to study improvements at Hugh Forest. We are looking at some geometric changes at the intersection of Hugh Forest and 51. Beverly Crest is on the opposite side of Hugh Forest, where the through-left and the right configuration could be changed through a left-through-right. Maybe that'll help a little bit with the congestion. I'm going to let Laura quickly run through the traffic technical memorandum findings, the specific improvements that are being done to each of the intersections in addition to the 12-foot multi-use path. There is right-turn lanes on Highway 51 as well. Laura, are you online? I'll turn it over to you quickly to go over that. You can go to, actually, next slide, please. This shows you the buffer along Hugh Forest. That open area you see there is where additional trees would be planted. The trees along Hugh Forest, you see the dark green trees, conical-shaped trees, those will remain, as will the additional trees behind that closer to Hugh Forest. We are, these are the existing two-story buildings, 30 to 32 feet in height with pitch roofs. Next slide, please. Next slide. This shows you a cross-section through the buffer, the 75-foot buffer that will be existing trees and new trees, shows you the distance the buildings will be from Hugh Forest, about 150 feet plus the width of Hugh Forest, so about 200 feet, plus the rear yards of the homes building to building. We are going to lower this building to three stories versus four. Next slide, please. This is the cross-section along the southern property line due to the fact that the Oak Manor neighborhood actually has a large open space area between us and, between their homes and our development. The separation here is greater at 300 feet. There will be a 100-foot buffer, as Dave mentioned, on our portion of the site. Next slide, please. This is where I'll turn it over quickly to Laura to quickly go through the improvements and the impact to the intersections and how that was measured and calculated. Laura, are you online?
Yes, Keith, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Again, my name is Laura Reed. I'm the transportation consultant who performed the TTM for the site. So what you can see on the screen is the identified mitigation from our TTM, but let's go ahead and jump to the next slide, and we'll hit those in more detail a few slides from now. So as Keith mentioned, we did go out here, we collected- So as Keith mentioned, we did go out here, we collected new traffic counts in February for extended time periods in this area, given the concern with the school traffic. So it's at four peaks, the school AM, a traditional AM commuter, the school afternoon, and a traditional PM commuter peak, which is more than what we would typically look at for a traditional TIA. In addition to those counts, we also took into consideration school, how occupied they are currently due to COVID, as well as any other COVID-related impacts to traffic. Based on coordination with CDOT, we did not have to factor any of those traffic counts up to reflect what would be traditional or typical conditions. You go to the next slide, please. Once we took those volumes, we grew them out by 1% per year based on coordination with the city and then also added our traffic generation on top of that. Our highest peak period was the PM, traditional commuter peak at 127 total trips in that peak, and all the other peaks were projecting 100 or less trips in those peak hours. Also, in our else, we did consider any trip reductions, redistribution, so county.
Laura, I'm sorry, your 10 minutes are up, so you'll have an opportunity for the two-minute rebuttal. You and Mr. McVane can figure that out. And now we'd like to ask Mr. Brock to come to the podium. Mr. Brock?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a presentation. Could you call up our first slide?
Your time won't start until your deck's up, so we're good.
Excuse me?
We won't start until your deck is up.
Okay, well, I will endeavor to use your time wisely. Mayor, planning council members that are present, certainly the council members, I'm representing the residents, many are in the room here tonight, so I'd like to recognize them as well as the 12 that signed up to speak and allowed me to speak on all our behalf. So next slide. Those residents, working in conjunction with our homeowners associations, have been engaging with city planning and with, more recently, with the developer, as Keith said. So we represent about 1,500 HOA members along with 600 members who have signed up and identified themselves as opposing this position, so it is widespread community support. Next slide. We, as a community of residents, do not find the plan acceptable, and we have four important reasons. Number one, the proposal does not recognize the agreement on which the original conditions for 12 MFCD were based. Second, plan does already accelerates the critical and dangerous congestion along NC-51. Number three, the plan does not support the community identity and character in the area, and the plan degrades the environment with significant loss of tree canopy. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. Just want to go through in each one. So in 1990, Summit Properties engaged with the residents, then around 200 that lived on Hugh Forest, to come up with a productive solution for how they could have multifamily housing that was essentially sensitive to the residents of the community. That is the South District objective, number one. So to secure that support, they agreed to do the following things. No access to the site, no access to the site from Hugh Forest, established a 200-foot buffer and five-foot berm along Hugh Forest, agreed to focus the construction of the buildings away from the western edge of the property, and then agreed to preserve the tree canopy throughout the development along the extended buffers. So in short, the zoning that's enjoyed today of 12 MFCD was done with, in conjunction with the community, and we find that to be very, very important because they accommodated community concerns. Next slide. So if you call up the slide, the video, please. I'm sure someone somewhere heard that. There we go. Of great faith. So this is our own traffic study, and we conduct it every day. Traffic congestion continues to be an issue that's talked about inside this room all the time. It's no less of one here today. So I know you're not familiar with the area necessarily, but let me just let the video play to show you, it's just looking toward Providence High School. You can see the legacy apartments are up here to my right. And we appreciate the detailed work that McKinley Horn did, but the average delay in 16, of 16 seconds does not play out in reality in the community. And so I think this truly captures the impact that we see every day. You can take a look at the school buses around the left and the right, and we'll keep watching them to see if they actually move during this two-minute video. And there are a number of mitigations in the plan. We recognize that. They require the community to accept increased congestion in a corridor that's already challenged. And this portion of NC-51 is a high-risk corridor for a number of reasons. The offset of Hugh Forest, which you can see, it's not a 90-degree angle. It's greater or less than a 90-degree angle, depending on your view. It's the only exit the residents, the 400 residents, 400 homes have on Hugh Forest. It's their driveway. The traffic generated by 2,000 Providence High School students, 1,000 Carmel Christian students makes this portion of NC-51 high risk. The crash data doesn't capture what really happens because we know when there is an accident on this corridor, the people that are called are not the police, the insurers are called. And so the data significantly underestimates what really goes on during this corridor. So the real accident rate's even higher, and the majority, obviously, are our high-risk teen drivers. So we look at the mitigations, and it really doesn't give us the feeling that it's going to address the real need, and that is the fact there's too much being put in this very vulnerable area. And you take a look, those school buses, they haven't moved. So let's go ahead and go on to Slide 19. Not that we had, didn't have faith, and you go ahead and go to Slide 19, if you want to speed through there. And back one. Just back one more up. Very good. Thank you so much. So here's our third objection. It doesn't, it will significantly change our community identity and character. So four-story construction, I know, is usual in many places, but along our corridor, within our community, within a 40, a four-mile radius, this would be the only one. And it does change the character of our community. Next slide. So we do know there's a housing crisis, and I knew that, we do know there needs to be more dense housing, but our particular community in this circle, inside this circle, enjoys multifamily housing that basically folds into and works well alongside our single-family homes and other, many other housing opportunities. So the one issue about going high is it causes us to lose buffers and removes trees. Next slide, please. It would significantly degrade our natural environment. So that tree canopy that was retained from 1990 will actually be removed, and it will add another 300 parking spaces where those trees stood, and that becomes obviously an issue for runoff in a four-mile creek. Next slide, please. This is the overlay, and while we won't step through it, the overlay says everything inside that red, red lines, inside those red lines, those trees will be gone. Okay, so while the architectural drawing looks interesting, we know that it'll reduce green space by about 60%. So it's a major step backwards, and it's one that can't be repaired when it's happened, when it happens. Next slide. We also feel this plan doesn't support the 2040 vision. The plan says to us that all residents should enjoy a development, they should benefit from a development, and in this case, it increases density in an area that's vulnerable, doesn't integrate with the natural surroundings, doesn't retain community identity, but more than that, it doesn't really offer safe and equitable mobility for anyone. Next slide. We are not, we are not from the "not in my backyard" community. We actually have multifamily housing in our backyard, and it's worked well. It's worked well for 28 years. And the reason it has is because the developers were sensitive to the single-family housing, the other housing that's in the area. So with this, we would think this plan could be improved by eliminating the access to Hugh Forest Drive in keeping with the 1995 agreement. And we understand the subdivision ordinance was implemented to make connected community important and not to degrade it, but it does here. The ordinance does allow for variance, and we really are asking for this to be looked at very closely. It reduces the reduction of the height of new construction. I think Keith has made a comment about reducing height, and that's a positive move, but expanding the buffers to retain current tree growth because those trees are important to all of us. It's the character of our community. And notwithstanding our position on the connector to Hugh Forest, we know traffic is saturated there, and some of the improvements that are offered are certainly important to our travelers going to and from, especially on Hugh Forest. So by, but by keeping that, we end up with not providing a connected community, but a disconnected community. I know in the meeting that we had with, certainly with the developer, Moore Van Allen, McKinley Horn, on the 3rd of June, they indicated the developer doesn't want this, and so we are asking the developer to absolutely apply for a variance of this ordinance. But if it holds true and the city prevails, then what we'll end up with is a public road that goes all the way to where the green shading starts, and then it goes back to a small private road, not meant for through traffic. So what we'll do, what we'll do, we will do is we'll end up with basically creating driveways for the development at the expense of any kind of connected community. We remain opposed to this. So let me summarize. Our points are very clear. Next slide, sorry. Next slide. Our points are very clear. The previous agreement really was based on achieving compatible solutions, and we believe they are there. We haven't just arrived at them yet. But it was a formula that created an ability to have multifamily development working well with single-family housing. So the petition is not sensitive to those residents, and since consisted with the South District plan, and we've seen, the 2040 master plan wants to ensure that future development benefits all residents. With this petition, the benefits only accrue to the developer, what the long-term costs are borne by the surrounding residents day in and day out. This plan as proposed misses on either standard. Mayor, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. You have. You know, we're not accustomed to that since the pandemic, and so it's kind of nice to hear you guys tonight. So thank you. It's like the old days. I believe you. I believe you.
They're not clapping for us, ma'am.
I know that, but it's just the sound. All right. So let's go back. The petitioner has a two-minute rebuttal before we open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. And quickly, we do want to work with the residents, and just like the petitioner did in 1990, we are trying to be sensitive to the concerns. We are trying to maintain as much buffers as we can by, but also allowing us to develop and add additional units. Since 1990, it's been 32 years. A lot has happened on 51. Providence High was just new in 1995 when this, actually, 19, when this was developed, Providence High was new. Beverly Crest wasn't there. The multifamily across the street wasn't there. So a lot has happened. This is a site that is zoned for multifamily development and is already developed with multifamily. It's a good location to add a modest amount of units. We're down to 212 net additional units. The congestion at the school is really beyond our ability to solve. It's a school issue at that 7:15 hour of the morning where the people are trying to go into the school. However, we've studied that intersection, and we are making improvements at that intersection, as well as improvements at Hugh Forest and 51. The delay to the northbound traffic here, from northbound traffic on Hugh Forest trying to leave the community ranges from 1.1 second to 3.9 seconds, additional delay beyond what they're experiencing today. It's a modest amount of increase, but it is an increase. We did look at building height. We are lowering building height. I do have a slide. There are four communities within a four-mile radius that also have four-story buildings. If you could go to a couple of slides beyond this, you'll see that. We'll try to leave as much of the tree canopy as we can. We have created 75-foot buffers plus additional building setback. That is a very, that's, I know that's less than was originally committed to, but those are fairly generous buffers by today's standards for development when abutting residential. We're not on top of any single-family. We're set back a long distance. We're not affecting abilities, the privacy of folks' rear yards.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. McVane.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I believe if Mr. Brock and Mr. McVane will stay close, we'll open it up to the council. I have three people that would like to be recognized, Mr. Driggs, Mayor Pro Tem and Ms. Ashmira. So we'll start with Mr. Driggs.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to discuss this one for a minute. I think the conversation we had earlier was very relevant. I'd love to play back a recording of Mr. Bakari and Ms. Watlington. This is another example of the same kind of tension that we are creating with our policies, the contradictions in our policies that are making it tough, frankly, for everybody. I will say the residents are absolutely up in arms. You see the turnout we have tonight. That is the tip of an iceberg. There's a website, a flood of emails. I'm sure you've received a lot of them, and we heard what their objections are. I will just comment that as far as I'm concerned, this is not a conventional site plan amendment. The old agreement allowed 266 units on a conditional rezoning at this location. It was zoned R-12 for whatever reason at the time, but the permission they have is for 266 units, so this is a dramatic increase and a change in style as well at that location. And there are objections to the fact that this kind of housing is unsuitable there. We have a neighborhood character overlay concept in our plan. We have community benefits in our plan, and when we ignore the resistance that we're encountering from the community, the nearby community in this situation, you have to wonder what that really means. The trees, a major priority for us, and a lot of trees are going to get dislocated because of this. It doesn't check the 2040 boxes. So I understand the opposition from residents. I agree with them. The difficulty we have, as I think was suggested by the earlier conversation, is our policy calls for density. This has been recommended for approval by the staff. So where are we, you know? And have we really done enough to consider the convenience and comfort of people who live in a given area against this goal that we have to create units? And I would suggest that there is a fallacy to a certain extent in our whole approach. Mr. Winston has commented, my fellow economist, about how supply and demand, and, you know, if you increase the supply, the cost of housing goes down. But if you increase the supply of housing and you succeed in bringing the cost of housing down, the rate at which people come here goes up. You're not necessarily going to get ahead of that. So we need to continue to work on affordable housing and on strategies, but what you could end up with is a situation where we have overcrowded roads and we haven't really moved the dial on the housing cost issue. So it's very difficult for me now because the converse of all that is, we do have those policies. The staff has recommended approval. The petitioner is within their rights to want to do this based on the statements that we have made and the policies that we have put out. And so in fairness to the petitioner, we need to make up our minds how to deal with this. And I will point out that the moratorium idea comes up. I've heard that from time to time. A moratorium is not a practical solution. The moratorium would send our housing costs right through the roof, totally contrary to a whole bunch of other things. And it's also not necessary. I tried a couple of times over the last couple of years to propose something like a congestion overlay or a modification to our procedures in those very sensitive areas where the congestion is the greatest. I did think the contrast between the petitioner's slide and the video that we just saw of the same piece of road was quite remarkable. So, you know, where are we at this point? I appreciate that the petitioner has responded, has been responsive. I've just heard now of the reduction in height of the units. We talked about that earlier. And the attempts that are being made to address the tree save or the vegetation issues, we still have a basic problem about traffic. But one of my problems, too, for you who have come here, when the traffic engineers say that this is not going to have a huge impact, and when our engineers say that they support that analysis, it's very hard for me to kind of tell them they're wrong. I'm not an expert there, and the council will have to be guided by the expert opinion we get. And I think the point that was made in the presentation about, you know, don't give me a traffic study, just go and stand on the corner and look. I've driven through there myself. I know what that's like. There are many other areas in Charlotte that are like that. And once again, for us on council, the challenge is this is not isolated. We cannot, we cannot respond to the traffic issue at that location without also responding to the traffic issues that you've heard about tonight in other places. We need to have a policy. a policy on this one. So, my plan is to work with residents and with the petitioner, and I do appreciate that the parties have been constructive in these conversations. There is no sense on my part, from the residents, that this is some, you know, angry NIMBYism or anything like that. They have very valid concerns that most of us would have in their situation. So, we're going to try and alleviate those concerns. On the Hugh Forest connector, petitioner did offer to make an application, and for a variance on that. And I'm not sure about it. I think we should make the application, but I just have to caution you, CDOT is pretty clear on our subdivision ordinance and on the exceptions that they recognize to that. So, I wouldn't want you to get really hopeful. I will engage personally. I'll see if we can get this done, and if we can get them to look at it and recognize that no real purpose is served. But I'm not sure that the, that we can set that rule aside without setting a precedent that a whole bunch of other people might want to access as well. The one question I did have for the petitioner that we talked about earlier was this tree preservation or relocation. You talked about it a bit, but do we know how many trees and what that looks like for the purposes of people living nearby or driving past there?
We did show, if you go back to our slide presentation, it would be 20 to 25 large trees within the site, mature trees within the existing site, that would be transplanted from the site. One slide back, please. This right here are images of the trees that would be transplanted from within the site to out to the buffer. We're thinking 20 to 25. It could be additional once we get out there, but that's the idea and the commitment that will be added to the plan.
Okay. So, I'll just say, in conclusion of my remarks, the residents, you have done a great job of telling your story and making your case. Mr. Brock has done a great job of delivering your message, and that will count. We just need to see what further changes are possible, to see whether we can close the gap a bit and arrive at an outcome here. It would be very hard for us to just reject this entirely, given the state of our current policies and rules. So, question is, can we fix it? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Can we ask you to hold your applause until the council members have spoken? We have a 10 o'clock rule, and we've still got like 40 petitions to hear later on. So, just help us out a little bit. All right. So, our next speaker is Mayor Protem, followed by Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the petitioner. And to, I just want to make a comment. This truly is a compliment, so I hope it doesn't come across wrong. I really appreciate all of the emails that were individually written. We often get sort of copy and paste emails, and you all sent, we had to spend a lot of time reading them, but it shows, me at least, that you really thought you were thinking about it on your own, and that you took the time to write your own positions. And I appreciate that, because it does make a difference. I think that, especially in my position as Chair of Transportation and Planning, the 2040 Plan was a really huge effort on our part. And it took a lot of time to get it passed. And so, the goals of the plan are very important to me. The objectives of the plan are very important. And when I looked at this particular rezoning, as Mr. Driggs, I think he summarized the whole situation pretty well. But what really struck me was that nine of the 10 goals were not met in this rezoning. And I would argue that the one that was met, safety and equitable mobility, I'm not really sure how it does that. So, I struggle with this. I've struggled with Providence Road for a long time. I have, you know, going back to the conversation we had earlier about infrastructure and transportation, nothing's coming to fix Providence Road. And I'm not so sure about Highway 51 either. Neither of those are our roads, and so, there's very little we can do. Having had kids at Myers Park High School, I definitely appreciate being on a busy road and having kids, new drivers, coming in and out of there. We've had our own run-ins with insurance companies. I won't say anything more than that. But, and so, I also have very serious concerns about what it's going to do to traffic on that road. Stormwater, there was a note in here that, by Charlotte Water, that says, "The proposed rezoning has the potential to significantly impact the capacity of the local sanitary sewer collection system." That's something that we've got to address, because that's concerning. And that goes back to the earlier conversation, that if, we should, we should know whether or not our infrastructure can support these projects before we go ahead and approve them. So, that's another concern I have. I think, just to mention the 1994 Plan, I think we all have to realize, in the entire city, that it's hard to refer back to what was done almost 30 years ago. So, we've got, as Mr. Driggs said, we've got to be open to negotiation. And I think back to probably one of my first rezonings was the Colony Apartments in South Park, which I completely wanted to vote against. But residents said, "We've been working with the petitioner for 18 months to get what we need out of this project." And so, I absolutely encourage you all to work with the petitioner and think about what you need, because change is going to come to our community. I don't know what it will look like exactly, but we do need more kinds of housing. We do need density, but we love our tree canopy. So, there's got to be some middle ground here that the petitioner is willing to work with you all on. And I think that you're a very well-organized group, and so, I have no doubt that you'll be willing to do that. And again, the tone of your emails was very respectful and professional, so I think that that will be a good path forward for you all, if you work with the petitioner. Thank you for that explanation. I couldn't figure out how going from R12 to R12 would almost double the amount of parking or traffic, just the math. I wasn't a math major, but that didn't add up for me. So, thank you for that explanation. And again, I just, I hope that there is a reasonable resolution to this that everybody can be pretty happy with. But as it is right now, I'm going to, I would be struggling to approve this petition. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Ashmira, followed by Mr. Bakari.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a meeting earlier today with the residents. There were about 10 of them, and I really appreciate how organized they are. And Mr. Brock, you did a great job with your presentation, as my colleagues mentioned earlier. A couple of comments that I have, I know some of the comments that Mr. Driggs have already addressed in terms of the concerns around the height and the buffer. I would like to see some of that being addressed by the petitioner, because I think those are valid concerns that residents are bringing. In terms of the tree canopy, I would like to see, under our UDO, I know we have a heritage tree, we are discussing heritage trees as part of our UDO, and how would this look under our UDO, especially as we are trying to also ensure that we have reached tree canopy throughout the city. So, that's a question for our staff, if you could address that for us.
We'd have to coordinate with our folks working on that section of the UDO and get you a follow-up report on that one.
Okay. Yes, that would be great, because as we are looking at our tree canopy, I know we are finding ways to preserve and protect our heritage trees. And I know we have a very strong mitigation requirement. I would like to see how that would work under our UDO, especially with this rezoning. Residents are bringing up some valid concerns, especially the quality of life concerns around traffic and congestion, and just the safety. And I look forward to seeing those concerns getting addressed by the petitioner. And I don't know how you addressed the connector questions, because that's actually part of our ordinance. So, Mr. Petten, if you could just elaborate on, from what I've been, what I understand, that petitioner is not even able to submit the request for variance, could you just speak on that and see if there is any, if there is anything we can do to address the residents' concerns, concerns around the connector?
Sure. So, the road that connects to Hugh Forest is required by the subdivision ordinance. It's, the site itself exceeds the block length requirement. So, sites over a certain length, they're required to be broken up into smaller block lengths. So, that road connection helps to break up the, I think it exceeds the length by about 130-some feet by the ordinance. So, that road's a requirement, like I said, of the ordinance. There are provisions to request some relief from those. There are certain constraints that need to be met, that have to be submitted and reviewed by the staff. That's a separate process from the rezoning process. We don't typically go through that concurrently. Of course, we can certainly look at it. But typically, the plans that are shown for conditionals need to meet the ordinance and then go through those processes after the fact to request any kind of variance. We don't usually grant those through the rezoning process itself. So, we certainly can look into those. We've, our subdivision administrator is certainly aware of the concerns about the connection, but I do know that it is an ordinance-required street connection, and there is a distinct process that's in place to request any waiver from that.
Yes. So, I understand that there will be a separate process. But I think what we are trying to find out, if at least the petitioner can apply for it. From what I understood from my meeting with residents, that currently, they couldn't even apply for it because of the current language. Is that correct?
It can be applied for, but again, it's not something we typically grant as part of the rezoning process. The rezoning itself can't eliminate an ordinance requirement, but they can certainly go through that and see if there's a waiver that can be granted after they get into permitting. But typically, the conditional plans need to meet ordinance requirements unless there's been some other relief granted. So, we can certainly look at that concurrently, but right now, it's got to show as an ordinance-required street.
Right. No, I understand that it's a separate process, and we can at least take a look at it. I would like to see that, if you could also provide that as part of our follow-up report. But I look forward to working with petitioner and our district rep to see if we can address these are very valid concerns from the quality of life that we ought to be able to address. Because, yes, it's one thing, we can increase the density to increase the supply of the housing, but we ought to ensure that we are also addressing the quality of life issues, because these are really important issues. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bakari.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Followed by Mr. Phipps.
Neighbors, thanks so much for coming out. That's, that means a lot, as Mr. Driggs said, when you come out in force and you put the time you have into this. Let me let you in on a little secret around here, which is, this is not new. This happens every single month in some form or fashion. I've seen it personally from around the dais for five years straight. And it's sad that we've let it get to this. It's not on y'all. It's not on the developers. It's on city council. It's on our ability and desire and bandwidth to move forward and make investing in our infrastructure a priority. And for those of you who were here earlier with my case, that's just one of dozens that we deal with every single month. Everyone here in the rezonings, rightfully so, has their heartstring tugged at and wants to do right by you, and wants to help development, so those things happen. But when it really counts, and when it really matters, we don't put the effort and time addressing what's on our plate, our problem, which is investing capital and taking moonshots and being serious and making that our top priority. You know what we do during that time? We spend that time and effort investing in affordable housing bonds where we're barely, you know, making a dent in the problem. Or hundreds of millions of dollars there, hundreds of millions of dollars for stadiums and arenas, streetcars. That's where we put our priorities as an overall council, not sitting down and seriously saying, "We're going to get the bread and butter of what we're supposed to do here right," which is water and wastewater and traffic congestion, infrastructure around our roads. So, this is truly on us. And it's sad, because we keep doing this, and we keep deprioritizing that. People talk about it all the time, but we could solve that. We could solve these problems if we said, "All right, that's our top priority, our roads and congestion and infrastructure, particularly around where we're putting huge developments in." So, now, we're in these positions, unfortunately, every time where we're reactively looking at a rezoning, and neighbors and a developer are saying, "Okay, well, this sucks. This is terrible, but we'll, you know, we'll try to solve the best we can." It's our problem, and we haven't solved it. So, again, we're not going to solve that in the next month, let alone the next year, if anything doesn't change materially. So, my suggestion to you guys is, keep working, keep doing what you're doing. You're on a good path. And at this point, I think the only way that this has a really good outcome is, you work on the smaller items, you focus on that connector, that back connector over into the road that goes into your neighborhoods. And I think everyone should demand of city staff and everything, which is our policy here, make it work where we don't do that. I'm a big believer in CDOT's mission, which is connecting neighborhoods, not cutting off connectivity. But that goes part and parcel with, are we doing our job, investing in the infrastructure that doesn't make that miserable for all of you? And we are not. So, until we start doing our job, you need to figure out a way to force them not to have that connection there, because at least then, it cuts off a bit of the problem. The developer mitigates the impacts they make, and maybe one day, we'll pressure this council to prioritize doing our fundamental job for you.
Mr. Phipps.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to echo what Mayor Protem said about all of the emails that we received on this petition. I read every one, and was certainly pleased to receive an email from one of my former colleagues with the Office of the Control of the Currency. It was great to hear from him, and I will be responding to him in due course. But what I wanted to talk about was the connectivity internal to the site. Specifically, it looks like we're going from one entryway to three entryways. So, I wanted to know, the entryway at Echo Forest, that's projected to be extended to Hugh Forest. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, would that connection be signalized at Hugh Forest?
So, the driveway on Hugh Forest would be unsignalized with a connection to a signal at NC 51.
So, Echo Drive would actually have two exit points, one at Hugh Forest and one on Highway 51?
Yes. So, there's one full movement access on Hugh Forest Drive, and one right-in, right-out access on NC 51.
I read something in the staff analysis that said that a part of Echo Forest was a private road, to the extent that it gets extended. Would it still be a private road, or would it be a blended public-private road?
So, the existing Echo Forest Drive on the adjacent parcel would remain private as of the current petition, and the new roadways within the petition would be private streets built to public standards with a public access easement.
So, without that, you said there was no plans for signalization at Hugh Forest. Have any, in your traffic impact analysis, has there been any information on queuing or stacking with regard to that intersection leading to Highway 51 and Hugh Forest?
So, the petitioner provided TTM indicates some small level of queue increase northbound on Hugh Forest at NC 51. But that queue is not expected to reach the new driveway, according to the provided analysis. And there's no indication of queues southbound on Hugh Forest approaching NC 51.
With respect to the subdivision ordinance that requires this connectivity, was that subsequent to the 90, I think it was, what, 95 or whatever, rezoning on this site, did that come after that changes to the subdivision ordinance?
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Phipps, you're good?
Yes, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Winston?
Thank you. So, it was mentioned that the original plan was done with the community, with the county commission, obviously not with the city or city council. I think we have to acknowledge that those plans are symptomatic of the problematic growth patterns and strategies that we have historically employed. And those are the types of strategies that have led to the issues that we're And those are the types of strategies that have led to the issues that we're facing in this part of town and all over Charlotte. So just doing nothing is only going to continue to exacerbate the issues. So we obviously, you know, I hope it's obvious to all of us that we have to change. We have to do things different, and those changes are going to happen in an iterative fashion. That's just how things work, and honestly, that's how things work best. But what I did hear, and I think Mr. Phipps' question was getting to this, and I have spoken to the developers, is that coming out of Hugh Forest, residents will have access to two additional right turns onto Highway 51, Pineville Matthews Road, with one of those right turns allowing them to completely avoid the congestion that would be backed up with that left turn off Highway 51 into Providence High School. Mr. Petten, am I looking at that correctly? Is that a correct assertion that I can make from the way this plan is laid out?
Yes, so the new connection to NC 51 would be unsignalized, but it would have that public access easement. The old connection to Echo Forest would remain a private street.
Would it have public access?
There would be a connection.
So there would be public access to that street?
Currently as proposed.
Correct. And it would remain a privately maintained road with public access?
Yes.
Okay. So I would ask the neighbors, I know there are 12 people that have signed up, so whoever wants to speak, what is the issue with being able to make a right turn that completely avoids that congestion that you're lamenting today?
Can I respond? Let me respond to you. So I think we have to be very careful about overestimating what that Echo Forest road looks like now. So you leave that new construction, that 75-foot private with public access. You go into the private road that's actually a small asphalt, no-shouldered, two-speed bump road by where about 10 parking places are, 15 parking places where people walk across and dump their trash. I don't consider it a connected community that way, so that's why I think the subdivision ordinance fails to recognize that unless the developer constructs a complete public road all the way through to the Echo Forest-NC 51 intersection. And that's not in this plan.
So you don't have a concern with being able to have that right turn that completely avoids the congestion that you find problematic? You would just desire it to be a larger road that you can drive through?
So let me go back. We certainly would see the, not having the connection into Hugh Forest with Echo Forest. But if the city prevails, if the subdivision ordinance is applied with no exception, then what we have done is we've created half a development will have a public-style, public-standard road that would feed in. Yes, and you would have a right-in, right-out to go to, certainly. You could only access it leaving. So yes, you could avoid if you were going toward Matthews. But in essence, to get through the entire Echo Forest complex, the road, you would end up going over two-speed bumps. You know, you're leaving West Village, all the way past the dumpster, you're going to be in a parking lot. Quite frankly, you're going to be in a parking lot. So I think that's the issue that we certainly don't want the connector to Hugh Forest. But on the other hand, by saying we have actually served the subdivision ordinance correctly, that's not true either.
So actually, the position is that residents don't want the ability to have, to be able to make a right turn off of Hugh Forest. They don't want to be able to avoid congestion that leads up to Providence High School. And the reason is because it has speed bumps. They would have to go over two-speed bumps.
May I respond real quick?
Yes.
We would use it, absolutely, we would use it if it were really meant to be a true connector that would exit Echo Forest at NC 51. It would cut off traffic that would have to endure the intersection at Hugh Forest and NC 51. But that's not the plan we're looking at right now. That's not the plan we're looking at. And so we shouldn't give it the characteristic of being that because it's not the plan. But yes, we would use it. But once again, what's there is not sufficient to what I would consider to be an acceptable connected community.
I hear that. So you would use that, and would the ability to make that right turn on Echo Forest, to access Echo Forest from Hugh Forest and then be able to make that right turn, would that in fact potentially allow neighbors to just about completely avoid the traffic that would be, the congestion that would be leading up to that left turn that would be going into Providence High School?
As it stands now, it would be a poor substitution. But if it was perfected as a complete public road, it would offer that opportunity. Residents would use it. But now, that's not the plan we're talking about. We're dealing with a connector to Hugh Forest that would then funnel traffic that's of only benefit to the development. As the plan, you're seeing the plan now. This is what we're trying to work with the developer on, and that's why the importance of removing the Hugh Forest connector because it's not providing a connected community at all.
So if you remove the connector on Hugh Forest, how would you, how would you work with the developer to figure out a plan that would allow neighbors to make a right turn onto Highway 51?
So there are some improvements to the Hugh Forest-Highway 51 connector. There would be no additional traffic that would dump out on Hugh Forest that the residents now have to be, it's their only exit, and it would allow those that are inside Legacy Arboretum to have two exits, one that's right-in, right-out on NC 51, and then down to ultimately use Echo Forest as they do today on their private road.
But if you don't have that connector from Hugh Forest, wouldn't that just be dumping more traffic from the existing and new development? I guess that would be northward, north onto Highway 51, therefore making Highway 51 even more congested and leaving no bypass for your neighbors and therefore further backing up Hugh Forest Drive?
So there's a right-in, right-out on NC 51 that's constructed right in the middle. It's not depicted well in this drawing that you might see. But you could go cut through, cut through, go down, and make a right turn, but you can't go left. There'll be no left turn, so you don't really solve. You solve half a problem and not the whole problem.
I see there's one that goes through the middle, but wouldn't that still add to the congestion on Highway 51 between that right-in, right-out, and the signalized entrance, left turn into Providence High School, which is creating the congestion?
So congestion, I mean, obviously, would it, well, the traffic studies would indicate that it would only be seconds added. So if that's the document used, obviously, the traffic from Hugh Forest into NC 51, NC 51 coming to the east, Beverly Crest, and the configuration of that, of that intersection has always been problematic. It will only be worse. So I don't know if I can, if I'm answering your question, I'm probably answering my own question, but I think you're at the crux of our issue right now is, can we work with the developer to come away with a cooperative solution like we've done in the past that would also protect the residents on Hugh Forest, but offer the opportunity for the developer to add, you know, denser housing in an area that the developer has every right to ask to do? So, no, your questions are correct.
Thank you very much. I do have a question for staff. The developer mentioned that they would transplant trees. We know, while that's a lovely effort, we know that oftentimes those trees don't survive. So is there anything in the plan that would require those trees to be replaced and maintained should those transplants not be successful?
Well, I think you were asking...
Yeah, we can jump in and ask from the staff perspective. So those are commitments or conditions that we're kind of hearing about as well this evening, so we haven't evaluated the conditional note to do that and what kind of assurances would be in place if it wasn't successful, what would be done to offset any kind of transfer that wasn't successfully planned. So until we see some conditional notes, I don't know if we'd be able to give a good, you know, give you any good feedback on whether or not it's set up for success because we haven't been able to review anything. That's the first we're also hearing of some of those commitments that are pending.
Mr. McVane, do you wish to add anything on the petitioner's behalf?
Yes, Councilmember Winston, thank you. On a couple of points, we would be happy to add notes that if the transplanted trees do not survive, they'll be replaced with additional new trees to make up any loss in the canopy. We'll make certain that the revised note contains that provision. To your prior questions to Mr. Brock, the developer is willing to look at how to improve the connection between Echo Forest and the new private street built to public street standards, the one referred to with the bump, the speed bumps, to make that connection suitable. It is a private street that was designed by the plan in 1990, so it is a two-lane road. It does have on-street parking, but we're willing to look at that and make some commitments as to how to make that a more, better way to get from Hugh Forest to Echo Forest, to your point of avoiding the Hugh Forest-51 intersection. So we'll continue to look at that and see if we can add some additional conditions that address that particular segment of road that isn't part of the redevelopment area.
Sounds like we might have found some common ground here.
I hope so.
So one thing that we haven't spoken about is that this is existing housing. And while the developer is proposing a plan that would increase the ability and supply of housing in this area and therefore in the city in general, we know that it can be very difficult for existing residents to find housing, you know, even if that displacement is meant to be temporary. Can you, Mr. McVane or the petitioner, can you speak to what kind of plans you guys have or what your intentions are? How are you going to deal with the existing residents that currently occupy these apartments?
Yes, sir. We will implement a transition plan for the existing residents of the 66 units that would be removed. That plan would involve a minimum of a six-month notice to the residents that their units are going to be removed. We would work with them to give them back their security deposits. We would work with them to give them a database of other similar locations to this in the area. We would also work with them, Eric, you may have to help me here a little bit on the other commitments, but there is a transition plan that would help the residents make that move. There wouldn't be a 30-day notice. They would get ample notice. There would also be a reimbursement of the last month's rent if folks stay there up to a certain date of the final date so they can use that additional money to secure a move and secure a new apartment. So there will be a transition plan implemented to help folks transition from the existing units, and those are the highlights of that plan. Eric, I don't know if I missed it.
If I could add one more element, we have several projects in that part of the city, and we would have preferred terms for new leases for these people, and we would be waiving all kinds of, you know, any kind of application fees or anything. So we'd really work closely with them.
Thank you, Mr. Winston.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Our next, recognize Ms. Watlington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I continue to grow disenfranchised with this whole process. I hear my colleagues saying, "We agree. We acknowledge. We're very impressed by your professional presentation. Thank God for a professional presentation because had they not had that, then perhaps would not have been engaged in the way they've been engaged so far," which is an alarming reality in this city by itself. But I'm consistently finding there's a disconnect between the ordinances that we control and the desire of our residents. And as several of our colleagues have said this evening, the buck stops here. And so when I hear things like, "Well, there's not much we can do about it," or "We've got expert opinions. Believe us over your lying eyes when it comes to traffic studies," or "We talk about, well, we're not going to solve it anytime soon," and yet we say and we poo-poo at potential stopgaps while we do the work and then still do not do the work, I question, who is it that we're working for at that point? Our job is to represent our constituents, not to think for them. And I find us more often explaining to them why we can't do what they ask, even though it's well in our control, versus reflecting and representing what they actually desire. And so I'm not sure why this continues to perpetuate through virtually every ordinance and everything that we lift up and then we sit on our hands and act like they're tied. But we've got to stop. It's not good enough anymore. It's just not. We do have to invest in our infrastructure. We do have to be willing to make tough calls. I can appreciate the transition plan or what's been called a transition plan, but the bottom line is we're displacing, if this is approved, we're displacing residents. And should they be lucky enough to go rent in this petitioner's other properties, then maybe that will help. But I question if we're really moving further ahead than any of the goals we're stating. And it just feels like we're negotiating the details without stopping to ask the real question of, is this something that is even reflective of what our residents want to do? So I'm struggling with the process overall, and I'm really going to need to see some adjustments and really need to see the residents come on board to be comfortable supporting this because it's not just happening here, as many have said. It's happening in Still Creek, and it's happening in District 4. And we've got to care about it even when it's not just our district. Because I see acknowledgement of issues, but at the same time, we raise our hands and continue to move forward, and we can't continue to do that. Otherwise, we might as well be sitting at home. So I look forward to see some changes on this one and to stick close with the residents and make sure that we're reflecting their desires as their representatives.
Thank you, Ms. Watlington. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few questions for Mr. Bach. He mentioned one of the requests was that the buildings be reduced to three-story units. And Mr. McVane described that the first building would be three-story in the front, for the front building. I just wanted to ask the residents, were they asking for three stories for all of the buildings or just, or does the front building suffice to their request?
I'll respond very quickly. That was an offer or discussion that Mr. McVane and I had today on behalf of the residents. Obviously, our point would be is, yes, if you can lower the footprint to be more conducive to integrating inside the natural environment, that's good. So it's a positive first step. Certainly, we would say if you could reduce them to three stories, it would reduce the need to eat up trees and buffer. But on the other hand, we're also, you know, cognizant that the density of housing needs to increase, and so this is an area we can certainly work with them on.
Okay, thank you. The second was... So we had the subdivision ordinance that I believe is passed by city council. Mr. Petten, can you tell me, is this a city ordinance that we're talking about, the subdivision ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And when was that adopted by council, do you know?
The original ordinance was 2015, and then it looked like it was revised on June 21st of last year. That was probably for 160D compliance with the new changes to state statutes.
That was probably for 160D compliance with the new changes to state statutes.
Okay, thank you. So again, to verify what my colleague, Councilmember Watlington, said, these, this is our ordinance that we're, that we're saying, you know, our hands are tied because of the ordinances. These are city council ordinances that we can change, that we have the authority to make those changes. But I did have a petition in District Four where the, there was a waiver for the subdivision ordinance, or excuse me, yeah, the subdivision ordinance was an entrance. I don't know if you remember that, Mr. Petten, but one of the concessions was that that developer was going to donate some of the land, I think it was to Parks and Rec, or they were preserving some of the land to be adjacent to a trail or something. There was a public benefit. And I was just wondering if that would be a possibility with this one, if they agreed to preserve some of the heritage trees, which we're hearing from the residents, if there would be an opportunity there to perhaps waive that entrance from Hugh Forest if, if there was some creation of an additional buffer or a commitment to preserve the trees? Is that something that would be up for discussion?
There's, like I said, certain criteria. I think there's eight items that have to be met or at least considered. Some of those are natural impediments such as streams and creeks and wetlands and floodplains. I think that was the instance in the petition that you're referencing. There was a creek crossing that was not as advantageous and would be more detrimental environmentally, so they chose to make that, I think, a pedestrian connection and provide some greenway access. In this case, I'm not sure what other constraints would be able to be met. I'm not the administrator of that ordinance, so I'd have to defer to the folks that, that deal with this on a regular basis, but there are constraints that have to be considered, and they, a lot of them deal with environmental constraints. So whether or not the loss or preservation of existing trees could be factored in, again, I'd have to defer to them, but certainly I'm sure they're happy to take a look into that for us.
Okay, I think that's an option because, and this is for the residents, you are able to apply, and I don't know if it would meet those requirements, but again, the ordinance is created by council. That may not help you on this, on this petition, but this is not out of our jurisdiction. So it's just, it is very frustrating for, for us as well, for me as well, when we, we keep saying the same thing over and over again, but we're not doing anything different. I also wanted to point out that this petition, if I'm looking at this correctly, is going to increase the school capacity to 166% at Elizabeth Lane Elementary. Is that correct, Mr. Petten?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
The school overcrowding is going to be, or it's going to be 166% of capacity at Elizabeth Lane Elementary?
Yes, so the school impacts that we got from CMS look like there was 23 students under the current zoning, and then this one was going to produce 103 students, so it'd be an increase of 80. Yeah, Elizabeth Lane Elementary would go from 157% to 166, South Charlotte Middle 108 to 110, and Providence High from 109 to 110, and that's increased utilization over existing conditions without the use of mobile classroom units.
Okay, so again, we, we're becoming desensitized to numbers like this, and this is just something for, that my colleagues really need to consider. That's an alarming rate, 166% of capacity, when we know that CMS has, you know, problems with testing scores, and all of these things are, are related. I also wanted to ask Mr. Petten, if we could have a cumulative traffic study for this area, if we can have the approved or pending rezonings within the last two years, maybe, within two miles of this petition? If you can send that to us and perhaps to Mr. Brock, because we know that, you know, when the residents come out and they're talking about the, the impact and the effect of the traffic, we know that many times it's because there are, there are recent rezonings that, that, that are impacting the traffic or, or it's just, we, the reality looks a lot different than what the traffic study might indicate. So, and, and we've seen that in the past, and we've gotten those reports before. So if we could have a cumulative traffic study, so we see what's really going on over there, and, and it supports the residents' request and their complaints about the traffic over there. So I think that's all the questions that I have, and I also want to thank the residents for the video. The video was profound, and I, we appreciate that. I also want to thank the developer for that transition plan of the existing residents. We'd like, I, I think that's a great idea, and I'd like to see more of those from developers, especially when they're buying the hotels. We need to make that a requirement for council. So I just think, thanks for your time. Those, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I believe that's everyone that has, has spoken. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? I have a motion and a second. All right, we'll have a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Watlington, yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your attendance. I don't know if you're going to all leave en masse, but I expect that that would be the right thing to do right now. Get out and enjoy the rest of this evening. Thank you very much. All right, item 32 has been, has been deferred, so let's go to item 33. Petition 2021-246 by MPV Properties for approximately one and a half acres located on the east side of Providence Road, north of Matthews Pineville and south of Beverly Crests in District Seven. The current zoning is single-family residential. The proposed zoning is office conditional, and the staff recommends approval of the, of the petition upon resolution of revisions on lighting and height, lighting height. So with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Petten, and I would like to acknowledge that we have opposition to this petition. Mr. McVane, you're batting a hundred today. So Mr. Vane will speak and organize for the petitioners. I have several people signed up to speak against. So Ms. Jackson, tell me if this is virtual. John Shin, Angus McKay, Dennis Grills, Kedall George. Are any of you present? You're present, the two of you? Or do we have anyone else virtual, Ms.?
Dennis Grills is virtual.
Who's, Dennis is virtual. So we'll put Mr. Grills last so that we can do that, if that's okay with you guys. All right.
And Mayor, we, Mark Newell is with me in the room, but John Grzinski is virtual, and he's speaking in favor.
All right, so you orchestrate this time, 10 minutes. Thank you.
I will.
All right, Mr. Pet.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. 2021-246 is one and a half acres on Providence Road, just north of Pineville Matthews Road and south of Beverly Crest Boulevard. Current zoning is R3. Proposed zoning is O1, office conditional. Adopted future land use, South District Plan does recommend single-family residential up to three dwelling units per acre, and then the site is also shown as a Neighborhood One on the 2040 policy map effective on July 1, 2022. The proposal for this petition is to allow a building up to 16,400 square feet for office and medical uses. Access from Providence Road would be provided via a single driveway at the northern edge of the property. Does widen Providence Road to install a right turn lane into the site's access point. Also commits to coordinate with CDOT and NC DOT to ensure that the existing U-turn bulb at Springs Farm Lane will continue to function. Constructs a 12-foot multi-use path and 8-foot planting strip along the site's frontage on Providence Road. Also provides trees and shrubs within the setback between the multi-use path and the building. Does install an 18-foot Class C buffer along the north, east, and south property lines that abut residential uses, and provides a 6-foot solid fence along the northern property line. That fence would not be, provide any reduction in the width of the buffer. Also commits to architectural standards relating to percentage of windows for the facade facing Providence Road, as well as the percent of masonry facade materials, roof design, blank walls, and transparency. Staff does recommend approval of this petition upon resolution of technical revisions related to lighting height, and will be happy to take any questions following the presentation by both petitioner and the community. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council, members of the zoning committee, Keith McVane with more than Alan Jeff Brown of our firm, and I are assisting MPV Properties with this rezoning request. With me in the room tonight is Mark Newell with MPV Properties. Be happy to answer questions. Online is Michael Wickline, the traffic engineer. We did do a TTM to address the traffic concerns of this site, and also Mr. John Grzinski, one of the adjacent property owners, is online and would like to speak in favor of the petition. As Dave mentioned, next slide, please. This is a one and a half acre site located on Providence Road opposite Spring Farm Lane. Next slide, please. It's a small site sandwiched between an existing higher-density multifamily community and lower-density residential to the north. Some of you may be familiar with this site. It was an attempt to rezone it, occurred in 2015 for a daycare center for up to 185 children. That generated about 800-plus trips a day. We're now trying to, next slide, please, rezone the site. This is how, the South District Plan, which Dave mentioned, calls for a single-family residential. The general development policies do actually support higher density. The 2040 place type map actually calls it N1. The site is adjacent to multifamily and also adjacent to the center, the Arboretum Center on the Corridors and Center Plan. It actually is probably an appropriate location for N2 versus N1. It also could be an appropriate location for a neighborhood center, and, and I have further in my presentation some examples of sites similar to this that the council has zoned for uses other than residential. The, one of the advantages, next slide, please. One of the advantages of a small office building like this, this is 16,400 square feet, so about an 8,000-square-foot footprint. We've got a 20-foot tree save area to the north with, with a fence, a solid 6-foot fence. We've got an 18-foot buffer that's part of that as well. We've moved the building further away from, as far away as we can from the single-family residence. An office building is a daytime use. It's not a nighttime use, and they're not there at night. It's also mostly medical uses, which tends to spread the peak trips throughout the day versus a residential use that would have a very AM/PM peak distribution. We are providing streetscape improvements along Providence Road. We're extending a right turn lane into the site as requested by CDOT, and we're doing a 12-foot multi-use path. Next slide, please. Like, this is the, the proposed residential building. It's two stories, limited to 45 feet in height. It will have a pitched man's, a pitched parapet to hide the mechanical equipment and give it a residential feel. Again, a footprint of 8200 square feet, I think I said, 84 earlier. Next slide, please. We did do some traffic work on this, a TTM. The traffic would add, adds less than one trip, additional trip in the AM and PM peak from the site, and also adds about one vehicle every three minutes to U-turns at the Candlewick-Beverly Crest intersection, and one trip every, no more than one trip every three minutes or U-turn trips at the Spring Farms and, and Providence Road intersection. It's about eight, it's less than 1% of the total traffic in the AM at Candlewick. It's over, it's just 1 and 1/2% of the total traffic at the intersection of Providence and Springs Farm in the AM, 1.3% of the traffic in the afternoon at, at Providence and Springs Farm Lane, and 1.2% of the five, 1.25% of the traffic in the PMP gets Springs Farm and Providence Road. Very low volumes, very low numbers of total cars. So based on that, there's really not, from the, our perspective and from the perspective of the TTM that we provided, not a real impact in terms of huge delays or, or safety issues from this proposed development. Next slide, please. We looked at three sites. There's actually probably more than this out there. The first site is a site on Ballantyne Commons Parkway, next to residential, next to multifamily, approved for over, just over 20,000 square feet of office. Done. There's the other site on Randolph Road. You can see Randolph Road, just over 18,000 square feet of office, I believe, or over 20,000 square feet of office, next to single-family. Actually, that's a built-in, a built site. Again, a good transition because, again, office does not have that daily impact. And then the third site is on Audrey Call Road, 30,000 square feet of retail and office, next to single-family on a major road. Again, can make a good neighbor, not a lot of activity, and that's actually also built and approved. There's plenty of examples like this. The 2040 plan, in two of these examples, recommends community activity center, and one of these still recognizes Neighborhood One as the appropriate use. So there's these smaller pieces throughout the city and community that aren't always appropriate for single-family because of their location and configuration, but make excellent opportunities to add office uses that can be good neighbors to residential uses. John, are you on? I'll let you address the council. While John, while we wait for John, I do have one more slide if you can go to that. We did also look at a townhome proposal. If the, if an office proposal isn't a suitable use here, then probably a townhome residential proposal would be the next. The daycare didn't succeed. Office is, we think, a good alternative. The next proposal could be a townhome community. It would be more buildings closer to single-family with more activity on the site 24, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The, the one benefit, I guess, if you're a neighbor, it may be possibly less traffic, but still access on Providence Road, right in, right out. Again, just in a, a very quick sketch to show you some alternatives that could occur here. John, are you on?
Mark, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
John?
Hello?
John, he's, 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 he just left. Oh, it's dropped.
Mark, anything you would like to add?
No, I'd just add...
Thank you for coming up, and if you'd say your name so that the clerk's office...
Yes, Mark Newell with MPV Properties. We're the developer on the project. Just wanted to add that MPV has developed many medical products, projects in and around Charlotte. We've developed for Novant, Atrium, Charlotte Iron Nose and Throat, North Carolina. We've done many of these in, in small areas, and, and they really provide a service for a lot of the residents that live around there. We could end up with dentists and physical therapists and, you know, things that are going to provide a service to the people that live there. So we're, we feel like this is going to be a very low-impact use to this neighborhood and help them by providing services. We always do first-class developments, so we would assume this is going to be just along those lines.
All right. Anything else?
We can go back to the site plan slide. We'll be happy to answer questions.
All right, and so now we'll have 10 minutes for who would like to start. Mr. Shin?
Hi, I'm on. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, thank you. I think we can.
Hi, yeah, yeah, so I'll keep it brief. You know, I own one of the adjoining properties, and, you know, along with Sherry, Tim, Bill, and Julie, who are the other two properties north of this parcel. Now I guess, you know, I've lived in Charlotte for 15, 16 years now. I've seen a change grow, and it's become a wonderful place to live. This rezoning continues to be one of those things that just doesn't seem to fit within the 2040 plan. We looked at the daycare center, you know, as was mentioned seven years ago. It wasn't a good fit. I don't think this is a good fit, and for whatever reason, you know, they found a neighbor who seemed to be supportive but couldn't get him to show up. So at the end of the day, I mean, I think what it boils down to is, all the neighbors are close to this. It doesn't fit with the Charlotte 2040 plan, and so what is the point of going through with this? To make it worse, right? They're threatening the idea of building apartments or something as if it's somehow worse, but it's not. And at the end of the day, like, you know, I think all the neighbors, both in my neighborhood and Beverly Crest, as well as the other adjoining neighbors on the other side of Providence, are against this project, and it doesn't fit with Charlotte's own plans and proposals. So I'll leave it at that and just voice my disapproval for this, and then let some of my other neighbors... And then let some of my other neighbors speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members and planning staff, thank you for meeting with us virtually. Some of you have already met with. Wanted to start with, so I'm from Providence Springs, which is directly across the road from this proposed. I also am slightly representing Candlewick because they're not here right now, but they are going to be hopefully meeting with you guys. I wanted to talk about the land use of this parcel. It's surrounded on all sides by residential areas. It's not a transitional area. It's a residential and then more residential, multifamily and then single-family. It's not the case that the commercial area that we know is the Arboretum on 51 and Providence Road can expand into this small one and a half acre lot, because that's, in some of the, the graphics, it looks like it's just expanding the arboretum into this one and a half acres. This, I know they wanted to, MPV wanted to try and make this look like a two-story house, but it really doesn't look like a two-story house. It looks like an office building. It has 82 car spaces. The whole one and a half acres is, is completely covered in concrete in, you know, whatever shape or form, and there's the minimum tree save. And with every site plan, we saw more and more compact car spaces coming into the plan, showing that it's really maxed out on the, the amount of space this is taking up. So I'll, I'll move on to a few other things about the actual land use a bit later, but in terms of traffic congestion and safety, and I think, you know, you'd get these TTMs, and it's like you guys said a minute ago, you know, standing on the Saturday and looking at this versus looking at a TTM, completely different. I mean, you could say it's only adding one U-turn every five minutes or whatever it is, but in reality, U-turns at Spring Farms Lane and at Beverly Crest-Candlewick Lane are a real problem, and this is going to bring in multiple U-turns in both directions at the same time. And the, the previous proposition for this with the Kitty Academy was denied based on just U-turn and traffic safety. So you have this tiny chunk of land you want to put in office building, and you have a tiny intersection for people to come out of Providence Springs, and then a small traffic signal at Beverly Crest and Candlewick. And, and yet, a half mile away or 800 feet away is a massive intersection of 51 and Providence Road where the other 10 medical buildings are on, on the Providence Springs side, and there's another three south of, of NC 51. And the reason why they're all there, and the reason why all that commercial activity is there, is, well, it's a, it's a commercial center, but it has a massive traffic signal there, handling trucks, thousands of cars turning in every direction. This is putting an office building in a terrible spot, and yet, a tennis ball throwaway is an actual proper intersection for where all the other buildings are. So you talk about wanting to do the right things in terms of the 2040 plan and traffic congestion, and this one is just so easy. All the other buildings are in the arboretum complex. That's where this should be. In fact, in those 10 buildings, there is currently space for, available for medical office space. Okay, let me continue here.
Let me just do a time check. How are we doing?
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
We have two more speakers, so it starts after you guys, how you...
Councilor Driggs mentioned about the need for housing. Here we have a residential area that's currently residential. There could be, it may not be 30 townhouses, whatever it is, but it doesn't matter. You need residential areas, and this would be a residential area right near a massive center of activity that already exists. Okay? This doesn't meet any of the 10 goals of the 2040 plan, and in fact, five of the goals of the 2040 plan would say, do not do this. If you read through them, and I'm going to read the last one, because I think it's really Retain our identity and charm. Retain the essence of existing neighborhoods by intentionally redirecting redevelopment. So you would redirect the development of an office building to the place where there's already 10 office buildings. I mean, it just does not make sense to, to do this. And if you want to help traffic, safety, providing residential areas for people living, this is wrong. It's that simple. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. George, your word?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. How many, how many minutes do we have left?
How much time do I have? Two and a half minutes? Something like that?
Yeah, just something like that, yes.
Okay. I, I do want to leave time for Dennis Grills to speak, because he's going to speak specifically about the goals of the 2040 plan. And I will just say initially, I was shocked at the staff report that I read, particularly the section that talks about the 10 goals. Literally, eight of the 10 were listed as not applicable. That's a little shocking, but there are a few other things about this staff report that really bother me. And I, by the way, I passed out, I provided 15 copies of documents, including our HOA letter, a letter for Beverly Crest Master Association, and we'll, I'm, I understand that we're going to have another letter from Candlewick as well. So we're talking about over 1,000 residents that are represented by these three HOAs, and I would appreciate that you, if you would take a look at those letters, because they really summarize our position. And we base our objections on congestion. And by the way, Mr. Driggs, we would love to know when that congestion overlay plan might happen, because as you know, and I, and what I keep this as civil conversation, and I know that Mr. Driggs knows that we have a terrible congestion problem on this part of Providence Road, and it is massive. The TTM, I will mention something about the TTM while I'm up here. It only analyzed the peak hours, one hour in the morning, one hour in the evening, as far as U-turn activity. Well, that's ridiculous. We think that this project could produce 150 U-turn, U-turns at Candlewick and Beverly Crest Boulevard, and that intersection has a light because of me and another zoning that took place several years ago. Before I asked for that light, it's a project called Viscaia, there was no light, and there should have been a light there. But the light is not adequate to take care of these U-turns. Absolutely inadequate. But let me get back to the staff report, because it is shocking. Primarily, it says the petition is inconsistent with the South District Plan, which was adopted in 1993. Well, that's ridiculous, because the South District Plan has been replaced, or is about to be replaced, on July 1st by the policy map. And you're not voting tonight to change the zoning. So the policy map and the place type of Neighborhood 1, which this parcel is designated as, should be a factor in your decision. Certainly, when the, when you have the zoning committee not meeting until July 5th, and a final vote not occurring until the 18th of July, I, I would argue that this has to be acknowledged as, as a plan that you have to deal with, not just saying that the 1993 South District Plan doesn't apply. You have to really deal with that. And the second thing that I'd like to say is, on the second page of the staff analysis at the top, it says the proposed office use provides a transition between the single-family homes to the north and west, to the more intensive uses in the activity center to the south and east. What do they mean by activity center? There's a large gap there. It's all called multifamily. It's the arboretum apartments. Well, I guess my time is up.
Yes, your time is up, and actually, the entire 10 minutes is up. So now for the rebuttal, we'll have Mr. McVane come up for the rebuttal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things in terms of rebuttal. We, we know office is an alternative to residential. The South District Plan, the 2040 Plan, do look at residential. We think the 2040 Plan, when the more focused look is done for this area, would probably recommend N2 here, not N1. And so there's, we provide, we, again, would say an office use is a good alternative because of the limited activity that it provides with very modest, if, very modest increase in traffic. Yes, we will add U-turns, and we studied the U-turn traffic in the AM and PM peak, and that's about three additional U-turns every minute in those peak hours. We did do traffic counts out there. There was actually only one, one U-turn southbound and one turned U-turn northbound at those intersections during the peak hour. I can't remember the exact directions. In terms of a, of an office development, this development has the same amount of open space as residential development have, actually has a 40-foot setback on Providence Road. Residential, blah, blah, would have 30. We have the same amount of tree save and buffer as a residential, so we're equal in terms of open space and, 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 and tree save areas. In terms of available space at the arboretum office center...
Yeah, the thing I'll mention is that, it was mentioned that there's availability, sorry, there's availability in, they were speaking about Belgrove with it, which is an office development across the street, across Providence. There's no availability there. We check that on a regular basis. So basically, what we're, we're being approached by different users, medical users. They're trying to provide services to the neighborhoods and the people in that area. They can't find anywhere to go. So they come to developers like us and say, please find us somewhere to go. That's how this project started. There's no availability in the, in the Belgrove Center. So that's...
Thank you very much. So we're going to open it up for council questions and comments. I'm going to start with the Mayor Protam, followed by Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One question for staff. It says it is widening Providence Road? How, how does that get done if it's NC DOT?
So there's no widening, per se, for Providence Road with the exception of the right turn lane into the driveway.
So it's just a right turn lane?
So it's, it's an existing U-turn location that has a bulb that will continue into a right turn lane to be able to accommodate the right turns into the development.
I do have trouble with the fact that it's going from 40 trips as part of the entitlement to 575. Again, this is Providence Road. There's no help coming for Providence Road. That, you know, that alone gives me some heartburn. So aside from that, I, those are all my concerns. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions for Mr. Shen, who was one of the speakers. I know he is not supporting this petition, and I see that this petition will provide much-needed amenities to residents nearby. Mr. Shen, is there anything in particular that you are opposed to, or a few things that you'd like to see being incorporated into this rezoning petition?
I don't think Mr. Shen is, is on, is, he may still be on watching virtually, but he's not up for speaking, so we may have to come back to him, Ms. Ashmira, unless you have other questions for people that are accessible in the room.
Madam Mayor, he is there and is unmuted.
He's on... Mr. Shen, are you on? Can you unmute yourself? Mr. Shen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you. Now we can see, yes.
So thank you for the question. I, I think one of the difficulties for me is in the daycare center seven years ago, you know, there was a lot of communication about, and community meetings to express what the plan entailed, et cetera. There was one community meeting, and then after that, there has been no other communication other than this meeting popping up from the city letter. So I haven't honestly reviewed it as, in as much detail as I would like to. So just being honest, it's one of those things like, if you ask me for improvements, I don't know, because I haven't seen what else can be provided. But also to the side question, sort of, what services, et cetera, right? In terms of hospital and other services, you know, in the corner of Pineville Matthews Road at Providence, there's already a sufficient, to me, at least it seems like, atrium location. And I think, you know, my primary physician care is there. My dental services are uptown where I work. And so I personally don't have any specific services that this office would provide for me, and neither do any of my neighbors, as far as I know. And that's why we're sort of in opposition of this, because it just doesn't fit in terms of how the neighborhood looks, feels, or the use of Providence Road itself. You know, so at the end of the day, like, I don't have anything specific opposed to the desire, et cetera, because I haven't actually had a, any communication or a real chance to review, let's call it revisions, past the first community meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shen. That is helpful. I would encourage you to meet with the petitioner to understand the plan. I understand your opposition, and you're attending this as when you received the notice in the mail, but I would encourage you to sit down with the petitioner and see if there are any infrastructure improvements or anything in particular that you'd like to see being incorporated as part of this plan to address your concerns. I think this is the right time before the, before this comes up for adoption next month. You know, you, you got three to four weeks to work on this with petitioner, and not just you, but every other, every other speaker that spoke after you did. I was looking at the community meeting notes. Now, I wasn't able to find, I wasn't able to find, can petitioner tell me how many people attended the meeting and if there were any feedback from that meeting?
Councilmember Ashmira, this is Keith McVane. I, I don't recall the number of folks that attended the meeting.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you. Thank you.
And were there any opposition there, and what kind of feedback did you receive from that community meeting?
There was opposition, and one of the things, one of the major changes that we did introduce at the community meeting was moving the building from the northern portion of the site to the southern portion of the site, so it would be further from single-family, adding the six-foot solid fence, committing to a 20-foot tree save area on the northern side, and we also relocated the dumpster. The size of the, of the building also changed from 18,000 square feet to 16,400 square feet. So there were several modifications made, and we're happy to reach back out to Mr. Shen and others and, and continue the dialogue to see if there are other adjustments we can, we can make to the site plan to address their concerns. We all will work with the staff to address the lighting comment that's in the staff analysis as well.
Thank you, Mr. McVane.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bakari?
Thank you. Mr. George, can I ask you a question? Do you mind?
Sure.
I, I've spoken with you in a small group before, and Dave, if you and staff wouldn't mind, just kind of weigh, so you, you mentioned quickly about the unique kind of timing of this with the place type mapping. Here we are in hearing in June. This would theoretically come back for a vote in July, and then July 1st, place type mapping comes into play. Could, could you just, just hit on that in a little more detail? And Dave, if you, I just want to make sure that we understand what he's saying there, and if it's solved, great, but if there's an issue, definitely want to have the experts weigh in there.
Would you like me to say something?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, this is kind of an unusual situation. It's because of the way these plans have been adopted and the order in which they were adopted. I mean, you had the 2040 Plan, which was in effect over a year ago, June 21st, and that plan obviously even included a lot of the portions of the policy map, and the policy map was being developed over a two-year period while all this process was going along. So now we have, it was adopted at the end of March, and it's effective as of July 1st, and the staff has taken the position that it's the hearing date that determines whether or not the policy map applies. And my response to that is, you've got to be kidding, because this policy map has been in the works for several years, and the developer in this case actually had, had an opportunity during that period of time to actually ask for a change in the place type if he thought that it was inappropriate, and never did. In fact, I asked for a change in the place type for the northeast quadrant of the arboretum, the arboretum apartments. Initially, it was listed as Neighborhood 2, and then it went to CAC, and then I said, wait a minute now, these are apartments. And they reversed themselves, the team, the place type team reversed itself. the team, the place type team reversed itself and designated it as Neighborhood 2. So, you know, it was possible for anybody to make a comment during that period. Now granted, not a lot of people are aware of the process, but I would think a developer of real property would. I mean, that's his business, that he should be aware of that. And he never made any comments. So this is a place type which is Neighborhood 1, and it's inappropriate for, uh, uh, an office building to be built in this, because if you, if you even look at the UDO, you'll see there's a, this is getting technical now, but there's a translation table in the UDO, and, uh, this is, uh, requested to be O1 CD, which translates to, uh, campus. Well, uh, if you can, we know, I think it's fairly clear, that a freestanding, uh, 16,400 square foot office building would not fit within that place type. In fact, it doesn't fit within any of the place types. And so that's part of the problem. And I cannot believe, cannot believe that the hearing date is the appropriate date to consider whether the place type and the policy map, uh, applies. I think it applies now, or it'll apply as of July 1st, when the, and the zoning committee meets on the 5th. So, we've asked, actually, that's in the packet of materials I gave, but, you know, you don't have a rezoning of a piece of property until there's a final vote by city council. That's pretty basic, right? So, you know, when you vote on this thing, you will be considering whether this is consistent with the place type.
Got it. All right, appreciate that. My second question then, in, uh, that's good. Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Petten, uh, I guess just a two-part question. Um, I'm assuming you guys have kind of made, made an ultimate ruling on hearing versus vote, and, uh, you know, that's, I'm sure it's a small percentage of things. You have your logic behind that. Any comments on that, but more importantly, I guess just from my perspective, if it hadn't been that, and we were looking at the go-forward mapping, what, what are the implications of that in, that are different from looking at what we're looking at now with, you know, Neighborhood 1, or, uh, but whatever it is, previous?
So, yeah, we can't evaluate currently a petition against a policy that's not in effect yet, right? So, right now, we're looking at it under the South District Plan. July 1st, we'll start looking at it under the 2040 policy map. So when we start to send materials to zoning committee, a lot of those consistency statements will be reflective of the 2040 policy map, which is why we're calling out what the policy map shows on these parcels this evening during the hearing. So, that's why you've seen some say this is shown as Neighborhood 2, this is shown as an activity center, this one obviously, as we all know, is shown as a Neighborhood 1. So, but we can't present information on a policy map that isn't technically in effect, same as you can't adopt a rezoning against a policy that's out of date. So we're kind of, as you mentioned, a little bit betwixt in between here with it. Uh, so after the July 1st date, consistency statements, which will go to zoning committee on July 5th, will reflect consistency with policy mapping, and, and that, uh, process will then start to take shape at that point. Uh, as far as the translation for O1, and this is gonna be conditional, this wouldn't translate to anything other than the conditional plan that it's got. Conditional plans won't translate upon the adoption of the UDO because they're conditional site-specific plans. So, uh, the O1 district being conditional won't translate to anything. It'll just stay O1 conditional, and that will be the zoning district that governs that property until that would be changed. So, uh, I think that covers both of those points.
That's helpful. All right, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um, Mr. W, um, Mr. Winston?
Uh, thank you. Um, I wanted to ask Mr. Grilles, um, a question, give, let him get a, a chance, uh, to comment. Um, I was able to meet with him, and he had, seems like, a similar, um, kind of, um, argument, um, around, um, the, the place type map. Mr. Grilles, do you have anything to add or, uh, to, to your neighbors', um, comments?
That's not a question.
Mr. Winston, if you recall, you have to ask a question. I mean, you can't...
Do you agree with the sentiments of, of, of your neighbors as it relates to the policy, uh, of our future place type map?
Yes, I, yes, I do. I, I think it's really, it, tonight, listening not just to this petition, but previous one, I, I, it comes down to, last year, council adopted the 2040 plan, and in the plan, it had place types. You have now adopted the place types, they will go into effect July 1. This doesn't meet with the place type. It's hard to find a place type that allows a freestanding office building on 1.5 acres. Now, the question comes up is, after 75 years of not having a comprehensive pan, plan, you've now adopted a comprehensive plan that changed the way, I believe it was Councilmember Ashmira that made the comment the night it was approved, that it changed the way you were gonna be doing business. And you now have citywide goals, uh, that need to be looked at. I, it's hard to believe that all the work that went into the 2040 plan, that you have a parcel of land that only has two goals that apply to it.
Mr. Grilles, I think Mr. Winston's question was, do you agree with the statements made by Mr. Young, I believe, and Mr. Shen?
You can't use this to add to the 10 minutes. You have to be specifically the answer to a question.
You have to answer that question.
I'll ask a question. I'll ask a question. How do you think this petition relates to the future place type map of Neighborhood 1?
That, Mr. Winston?
I don't think it applies.
Mr. Winston?
It's not an informational question.
It's not an informational question that is specifically around this petition. Let's, let's try to remember that we have to focus on what the hearing is.
There was just several questions that were asked about, in relation to 2040 plan and place type, place types, um, and this. So I, I don't understand how my question is cer, somehow out of order, especially when this person was, uh, somebody who was signed up to speak, so they're, they're able to, I'm able to question them just as if they, they, they came and spoke, but...
But if you would say that how does this relate to this rezoning petition, that would be a question. So, I think if you're saying...
I did ask how related to this rezoning petition. That's literally, if you go back and...
I just want to make sure that we're following our 10-minute rule that we've set for everyone during this night, this evening, and we are consistent on that. And so just to open it up generally, I think...
You told me how I should ask the question, and that's how I asked the question.
No, I'm not telling you. I'm just saying it needs to be specific to this petition.
It was quite specific. It was literally about this petition. That's literally what I asked about. Um, my concern, I, I'm not really moved, um, by, uh, the issues around traffic on Providence Road. I think that is, is something, uh, that we have to deal with on, on our own, um, and in relation to, to the state. And, uh, if, if petitioners are, um, are willing to improve, um, the traffic situation, um, that's great. Um, that's great. Uh, but, um, I, I think most folks would also know, uh, that I am not, um, the great protector of single-family zoning, um, that is, exists, um, in, in our city. But I do try to, uh, deal with things, um, from a policy standpoint. Um, and, uh, uh, I think the policy is important. Um, again, uh, when I look at this, you look at a very contiguous residential map, and I see this petition, uh, that has the characteristics of the type of petition that we said that we don't want anymore. We don't want to, um, uh, dice and slice up a map, um, because we think it's, uh, a, a, a good deal, um, uh, subjectively, uh, right now. Um, I am quite concerned, um, that, you know, we do have a plan, uh, that is coming into place, uh, that prescribes, um, uh, certain types of development patterns and growth. It does, the Neighborhood 1, it does allow for certain types of, of businesses, um, um, in, in, uh, uh, close proximity, um, to residential. It does not allow, from, from my understanding, uh, this type of, uh, development. Uh, this seems like, uh, uh, something where, um, uh, a developer, I don't necessarily think they have bad intentions, um, but they are, um, trying to get in, um, under the technicalities of a loophole. Um, and I have concern that, again, uh, uh, as it stands, as I look at this, uh, that we would basically dice and slice up, um, uh, our, our comp, a very small portion of our comprehensive plan, um, um, really at the precipice of it being implemented. Um, I think these, obviously, uh, these are issues that we're dealing with right now, and, um, as, uh, it, we're, we're gonna have to, um, as a council and as a staff, figure out the best way to approach, um, these as, uh, you know, as this, this window, um, closes. Um, but I think we should call it for what it is. Um, uh, so I have concerns about, about this, um, I, I, right now. Um, you know, I'd love to meet with staff, meet with developer, and, and definitely, um, encourage developer and the neighbors to figure out a way to possibly move forward with some type of common ground. I'm just afraid that, that, uh, that this is not it, um, currently. Um, and I, I think it is, again, once again, um, very germane to be able to talk about this and be able to question this, and it, it gets very, very, um, uh, disconcerting when, uh, uh, there's a, a very subjective governor of who can ask what when during these meetings by duly elected officials. Thank you.
Mr. Driggs?
Mr. Winston, um, the issue is one of, uh, trying to have a hearing in which we are focused on the petition at hand versus broadening the conversation to policy questions that, uh, have little bearing, is all I say. And, and please, just leave it alone, all right? Um, I, I want to tell you, colleagues, just briefly, uh, there's a lot of history at this site. I turned down a petition years ago, I can't remember in what year, for Akitty Academy there, because that would have involved 150 kids arriving, many of them making U-turns all around the same time. Um, so, uh, it's an infill site, which means that, uh, it, it has sat there vacant for years because it is not suitable, apparently, for a typical residential type of use, or it would have been put to that use long since in this market. So this is a bit of an orphan. Um, and, uh, but Mr. McVane, I, I do want to tell you, I don't appreciate the suggestion that an R3 site would have 32 townhomes on it if this is not approved. I'm just gonna point that out, it's not a question. All right? I would not approve 32 townhomes on that site, I can promise you that. So, just leave that one, all right? Um, we had, uh, I've had very little input, frankly, on this. I attended the community meeting, uh, I was in neighborhood meetings with a few people. The responses I've heard from residents have actually been kind of mixed. A couple of them think that compared to what goes on there now, where it has become a hangout for people at night, because there's a, a house there that's uninhabited. Uh, and I think the idea of a, a, a well-tended development of some kind at that location is preferable for some people. Um, I think you will all agree, colleagues, your inboxes have not been full on this one, and I just got this document now, so I would suggest that we all read this document. I will follow up with, uh, residents and the petitioner and, uh, give you as much information as I can before the date of the vote. And with that, I'd like to move to close.
I have a motion to close in a second. Um, we'll have a roll call vote for the motion to close. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Absolutely.
All right. The next item on our agenda is item number, oh, I'm, excuse me, Mr. McVane. I have to admit that I failed to recognize Ms. Samuel on the prior petition, and that for questioning that she had for you on the record that we, she would like to address concerning the, um, proper, the petition 202123 by the Goldberg Company. So, um, my apology... The hearing is closed, and so what I'd like to ask you to do, if you would meet with Ms. Samuel, so that she can have that question addressed, I would, I know you were about to walk out the door, but if you would do that, I would certainly appreciate it.
Very happy to, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is, let's see, item 34. Is that where we are right now? Um, for 2021-234 by Matt Gallagher, um, for approximately seven and a half acres on the east side of Oneida Road and west of Citadel Place in I-85. It's in District 1. Uh, the single-family residential is the current zoning, and single-family residential with conditional, um, is being asked. Staff recommends approval upon resolution of site and building design issues. Um, and in this case, we'll hear from... Matt Gallagher is for Tristan McGuinness and Paige West. So if you, are you all here? So...
Actually, Matt Gallagher is online.
Online. So if you guys can, if you can text him and say you'll be speaking for, we have two people against, Adriana Harris and Melvin Austin, and... I do not have Ms. Moore.
I have submitted.
Well, we're, we're gonna go ahead and the clerk will verify that. So we'll start with... Yeah, can, would you sign up and give your information to the clerk if she doesn't have it, please? Just to make sure. Um, yes, this is our city clerk here. All right, so we're gonna sign you up. And so, um, we'll go ahead and start with the staff presentation, and then we'll go to Mr. Gallagher next, after that, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2021234, that's just under seven and a half acres on Oneida Road at the end of Citadel Place. Uh, the existing zoning is R3. Proposed zoning is R8 conditional. Uh, that's for a single-family residential up to eight units per acre. Uh, the Northeast District Plan does recommend single-family uses up to four dwelling units per acre. Uh, GDPs do apply currently at this point as well. The petition does meet GDP, uh, for consideration of six, or, for consideration of up to eight dwelling units per acre, excuse me. Uh, this site is also shown as Neighborhood 1 on the 2040 policy map, effective July 1st, 2022. The proposal is for up to 50 single-family attached rental, uh, residential units, excuse me, at a density of 6.88 units per acre. Max building height would be 40 feet. Proposed ingress egresses via Oneida Road, as well as an improved connection at Citadel Place. Does propose six-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planting strip along both frontages on Oneida and Citadel. Uh, proposed a medium, um, wide residential public street with internal pedestrian network. Does propose on-street parking spaces, and then all corner and end units that face public or private streets would provide blank wall provisions that limit that expanse to 10 feet. Also minimal, minimize visual impacts of garage doors, uh, by providing some architectural treatments such as carriage-style hardware, translucent windows, or shed roofs. Does limit individual units to four building, or to four units in a single building when they front a public or private network-required street. And also, possible amenity areas and stormwater facilities will contain at least one of the following: a totlot, fire pit area, pavilion, or picnic tables, enhanced landscaping, or seating, or other similar features. Staff does recommend approval of this petitioner. Do have some outstanding issues related to transportation, and site and building design, and environment to work through. As mentioned, it is inconsistent with, uh, the district plan, but it is consistent with GDP. Uh, and we will be happy to take any questions following, uh, the petitioner's presentation, as well as presentation by the members of the community. Thank you.
All right. Um, Mr. Gallagher, you'll have 10 minutes with, um, your team, and if the speakers that are here present, if you could work out the 10 minutes, you've seen how it works, right? You've been here paying attention.
Yes.
So, we're gonna have, the, first, the petitioner will go first, and they will have 10 minutes, and then the three of you will have 10 minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Gallagher with Blue Heel Development. Unfortunately, a little under the weather, and I don't want to be that guy that gets everybody sick. So Tristan McManus with Dewberry is in the audience. He is my engineer on the project, and can take any technical questions or field anything on my behalf, in case I'm unable to answer it. Uh, a few years ago, Blue Heel Development started looking at this part of town, um, because, mainly because of the huge investment that city council made in infrastructure to University City Boulevard, North Graham, and West Sugar Creek. And to Mr. Bakari's point earlier, rooftops often are first, and infrastructure catches up later. However, this one is actually a little bit different, where there's huge investment in infrastructure. We saw that it warranted and could fit additional residential opportunities. Uh, we also noticed the success of the Ryan Home Community about a quarter mile away from this called North End Commons. this called North End Commons. And we would, we were trying to recreate that project. That was 87 units, a lot more dense. We have reduced our density down significantly from our first conversations with staff. But after an early conversation with Councilwoman Johnson, who pointed us in the direction of Teresa McDonald, a resident, a realtor, and a member of the Dorita Statesville Road Community Organization, weighed the opportunity to sit down with her several times, drive through the greater Dorita area. She pointed out good development, not-so-good development, and then also in turn introduced me and our team to Sylvia Cannon, who spearheaded the Allen Hills and Cary Hills Community Meetings and, and Community Organization. And so several months before our formal public meeting, we had an opportunity to join their monthly meeting and give a high-level concept of our project, future neighborhood, and then elicit some feedback. And so by the time we got to our formal public meeting, we had reduced density, captured more open space, committed to two amenity, possible amenity locations, and then reoriented the internal streetscape so that Oneida and Citadel wouldn't have any homes backing up to them. As one of the things that Teresa had pointed out to me in several not-so-good developments was from major roads or thoroughfares that you would see easily into people's back patios, and it was very unbecoming. So we tweaked our site so that nothing backed up to Oneida or Citadel. And what you see here is a culmination of that, those meetings, those conversations with the community organizations, and we're glad to say that we have their support for what's in front of you. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions after the neighbors speak.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Our next speaker is Tristan McManus. Mr. McManus?
Yes. Good evening. Tristan McManus, Dewberry Engineers. I'm working with Matt Gallagher on this. Couple of things I just wanted to elaborate on plan. Matt's mentioned that we had the community meeting. Some of the concerns that came up from the residents were in some of the initial plans. We had a few more units. We also had units that were actually backing up to Oneida. And actually, if we can like slide this over a little bit or something here. One of the things we've done here is we've added additional landscaping here. There will be green space that's better articulated along the front here. There is also green space along the back, where we were talking about the amenity areas, and we eliminated these maps and the units that actually backed up to Oneida. Because that is something that exists in the area today that was not desirable, that was voiced by the members of the community at that meeting at that time. I know another thing was making sure that we had trees along the plan north border up top, so we incorporated those as well. And then we've also included two medium residential streets that connect from Oneida to Citadel Place along the backside there. But just wanted to add those couple of points there.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, I'll be happy to take those as well.
Thank you. And we have a few more minutes, I think, for Paige West. Are you...
Paige is actually just listening in online, so it's just Matt and I tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. We now have three speakers speaking in opposition, Adriana Harris, Melvin Austin, and Dolores Moore. And we will start with Ms. Harris, and then together you all have 10 minutes as well.
Okay, my name is Ms. Harris. I reside in the Carton Glen neighborhood, and I thought a lot of members of my community, and they are against approving this because it's an extension character.
Ms. Harris, are you able to speak closer to the microphone?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
That's great, yeah, thank you.
So like I said, I have spoken to a majority of the homeowners here in the Carton Glen neighborhood, and most of them are actually against the rezoning for the new neighborhood, and it's because it's going to change the character of our community. We have too many houses, condos and apartments in the meter area, and also including Allen Hills as well. This new zoning will further overpopulate this area and lead to more congestion and traffic. We also have a safety issue. We have older population that's living in a senior living apartment, or Mayfield Memorial Apartments. They frequently walk to the bus stop and to surrounding shopping areas and stores. On one part of Oneida, there's not a sidewalk for them to walk on, and we are also concerned about the increase in traffic, with the average of being one to two cars per unit, which would be 51 to 100 additional cars. And all of those cars would be going on to Graham Street, either through Oneida or either other way that they had specified. But most of the people we think are going to end up coming up Oneida past our community and going out through the Graham Street, because it's the shortest distance to Graham Street and to I-85. Also, in our neighborhood, we did apply for some speed bumps, but we got denied. We do have a lot of people, a lot of drivers coming through our neighborhood to cut through to avoid the speed bumps on the outside of our neighborhood on Oneida Road. When they come through to avoid the speed bumps, they're running two stop signs in Carton Glen, one at the top of the neighborhood and one at the bottom of the neighborhood. And our concern is for the children that might get hit. Like I said before, we actually applied for the speed bumps, but we were actually denied the speed bumps for our neighborhood. Also, when you go from Oneida Road to Graham Street, there's a railroad track that is, needs to be repaired, and it is due to a lot of traffic coming from Oneida Road to Graham or going from Graham to Oneida. Every morning and every evening, there's a lot of traffic on Graham Street. So regardless of where you go out on Graham Street, the traffic is backed up. It's hard to take a left turn from Oneida onto Graham Street. Sometimes I have to make the right turn, go down, make a U-turn, and go back that way. My daughter has to be at work at 7:40, she can't even go out through Oneida and Graham Street. Also, a lot of car accidents have been seen at Oneida, Graham Road. Apparently, there's some debris from a car accident up there right now on the side of the road. So we do need a stoplight at Graham Street and Oneida Road. So at that location is a high-risk area for accidents. So right now, for the Carton Glen neighborhood, we want to see this get deferred into a traffic study as completed, that somebody actually go back there and look at what we're talking about. And we also would like to see the city invest in our community, so we can make a better solution. And I have two other people that want to speak a little further on some of the items I talked about earlier.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Austin. And Mr. Austin, you have 6 minutes and 49 seconds, and hopefully we'll have a little bit of time for Ms. Moore in that time period as well.
Hello, Mayor Protim.
Thank you.
And greatest city council members, thank you. I live off Osage Circle. It's the neighborhood right next to where Allen Hills. Allen Hills started developing in 1990. During that time, it had a flat area on the, like deeper end to the neighborhood. Also, it has four different ponds and lakes there. You have a good, I say, chemistry of trees, animals, all of those in their natural habitat right now. And the way the neighborhood is set, it would be sitting on a hill. And once they clear all of that off, all the water stuff will be running down to a valley. They did create a, a bridge, but right now, it's still made for yesteryear. Because right now, when we get heavy rain, we still get water. We still get flooded all the way through the backyard and everything. Also, the traffic situation, because they have now five speed bumps on Oneida, they cut through our neighborhood, where the water builds and stuff up at. Also, we worried about that becoming a safety issue, because right now, based on 2010 statistics, 78% of that neighborhood itself was homeowners. And right now, we scared they're going to bring more crime in, because right now, there's a neighborhood called Tanglewood that has that kind of development there. We understand that the need for housing, we're not opposed to it, but that structure where they're trying to put would not work there. Why? Because the way the neighborhood is set, up on the hill where the development he was talking about before, that's before it comes in. Now that neighborhood itself is going directly into the neighborhood to build a little townhouse and stuff up. So now the character of the whole neighborhood is going to be completely changed. That's all I'm going to say right now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Austin. And our last speaker is Ms. Dolores Moore.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, Ms. Moore. My name is Dolores Moore. My issue with this is, first, I just learned about this. Really, I actually just learned about this from a neighbor, from Ms. Harris. The thing is, this would affect me personally for the simple reason that there's no way they can build this without being on my property. No way. All this you see, and, and actually see the spot that they don't put this in, there's no way. When they built the townhouses on Oneida, the North End Common, the wildlife came to my backyard. The deers, the possum, the raccoons, the snakes, the lizard end up in my backyard. So if they develop this, they're coming back to my land. Now, what I propose, and Carton Glen proposed, that the city would buy up this property that they're talking about planning these houses on, and making the wildlife for these animals that don't have any place to go after they turn, just, you know, because they'd be back in my backyard. There's no way that it's going to fit in the position that they have that yet. There's no way that that can be there. It is so congested. If you took a walk through there, you would not believe that they want to put this much in that little spot. There's no way they can build this without landing on my property. It'd be in my backyard. My land goes over the creek. It's a creek that runs between there. My land goes beyond the creek. And if they build anything there, it would be on my land.
Okay.
And I see that's why I was not notified of this, period, because that would be on my land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Do they have any more time?
Two minutes. I, I don't know though. So are they allowed to speak?
Not much.
Okay. The same speakers?
Well, I don't know about speakers, because I believe that...
Yes, go, go ahead, Mr. Austin, you've got two minutes left.
The neighborhood that we're talking about is called Dorita. The Dorita itself is adjacent to a nature preserve called Riverwalk, and that's why all the wildlife and everything is there. There is a preserve on that property already where the lakes and stuff are. So all this congestion, what she's talking about, the animals and all that stuff, all that's going to be affected, the whole ecosystem will be offset. And not just to mention the traffic, but I'm worried about more of the water, the stormwater that's going to run off of it when everything is cleared. Because right now, when this heavy storm comes on the west side, our whole backyard is flooded. So yes, this, this is going to be something else. And her house right now, where she lives at, there is a creek. It did say it's some kind of easement, but it wasn't enough. Still, when the heavy rain comes, it floods up. Now it's going to even, even worse now.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. For your time.
We have two minutes now for Mr. Gallagher for...
Ms. Adriana?
Okay.
Oh, Ms. Harris?
Yes.
How much time is left? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Harris.
That is a big concern for our community. There is an issue, I'm not sure who is responsible for it, but a lot of people that was within 300 feet that was out in our neighborhood did not receive any other invites. Started with our president, she did not get the invite for the first community meeting, and when she got the invite for the first zoning meeting, she didn't get it till like four or five days before that Monday. I have another neighbor at 4926, I want to say. She is closer to that area than what I am. She didn't get the first or the second one. And Ms. Moore, who's down there talking today, she didn't get the meeting invite, or the community meeting, she didn't get the first zoning invite, and she didn't get the second zoning invite at all. So I'm not sure what was going on, but everybody in our community who's supposed to be getting these invites did not get them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harris. And I'm, I'll have staff look into whether or not those invites were sent out, supposed to be within 300 feet, yards of, of the subject property. So we'll look into why that might have happened. And with that, we have two minutes for the petitioner for rebuttal, if he so chooses.
No, thanks so much for the, the neighbors. We did make the attempt through the connection with Teresa and Sylvia, and had a few meetings at the church at Allen Hills. But definitely open to discussion for people if they did not get adequate notice. I am available, and staff can send along my email and my phone number, and we can, we can get time together. We'll also verify our survey boundary. We did extensive title work and surveying to, to determine that we were within our, you know, what we were going to purchase is what we would develop. Tristan can talk towards stormwater and retain that stormwater, but I know we'll work closely with staff to ensure that we won't affect people downstream. And as far as traffic, our hope here with connecting Citadel and Oneida is that we would disperse traffic north, south, and east and west, so that we wouldn't have one exit onto Oneida, which in turn would exit all the way out to Graham. In this case, we can go out Oneida, Allen Hills, or continue west down Lake and to Nevin Creek, Nevin to Sugar Creek. So we want to be thoughtful, we want to be considerate. We feel like we've done that with the reduction in density and the increased open space, but available for continued conversation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. And thank you, Matt, for the shout-out. The developer did reach out to me very early on. This might be the part of Dorita that used to be in four and is now in one, I'm not sure, but he did reach out to me, referring to Teresa McDonald, who heads the Dorita Community Area Association, and he's worked very closely with the, with the residents. So I apologize to Ms. Moore and Ms. Harris and, and the other gentlemen, if you all weren't notified. And I know that our city staff will take a look at the list to ensure your information is up to date, because the developer, the developer did attempt to meet and work with the residents. So I know that they'll reach out to you. I, I have a question for Ms. Harris, and asked to, I wanted to ask her why the speed bumps were denied.
You would have to ask Melvin down there, because he was the one that submitted that information. And I think it has something to do with, they did a count to find out if we had a certain number of cars going through or not. But when it comes to something like this, what's really concerning is not how many cars that are coming through, it's the fact that it's an issue, because it only takes one car to hit a child, and, and actually get hurt really bad. So that's our dilemma right now.
Okay, and that, that's okay. I just, our policy just changed very, very recently, so I don't know if, if the staff could take, could retake a look at that, and maybe the area will be eligible now. But I'll, I'll reach out to you, this is in District 1, but either I or the council member, I can speak for myself, I'll reach out to you to get some more information and hopefully make the right connections, along with connecting you to the developer. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. And we need somebody to really look at that. Graham Street and Oneida is really bad up there, it needs to be a stoplight because there's too many car accidents.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, and thank you, Madam Mayor Protim. My question was addressed, I'm trying to figure out why the neighbors were not notified. So I know Ms. Johnson is going to look into that, but I know we have this requirement where all the neighbors have to get a, have to be notified of the community meeting. So what was the process like, petitioner, and why some of the neighbors were not part of that notification?
I think that's really a staff question, Ms. Ashmira, that, and we've asked staff if they will look into it, to find out...
But the notifications is usually sent out by the petitioner, isn't that? It's, the letter goes out by the petitioner about the community meeting, with the community meeting information.
Right. The petitioner sends out a notice for the community meeting, but their, their notice list is derived from our mailing list information that we provide. So we, we generate the mailing list, and we use the same one that the petitioner does for the community meeting for us to notify folks of public hearings.
So we'll, we'll get an answer for that, Ms. Ashmira, and let the residents know.
Yeah, that's all.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes, question is for Mr. Gallagher. And looking at the proposed site plan, does look like it's pretty tight there. Are, are there any amenities on this site plan? Are there any amenities on this site plan? I know I see some stormwater buffer provisions there, but can you describe any other amenities? I see these two other green spaces there. Is that the extent of the amenities on the site?
Yeah, good question. We actually had that brought up at the neighborhood meeting. Excuse me. Sylvia invited us to, that there was a lack of amenities in a lot of new neighborhoods in this general area. And so they wanted to know if there was going to be some congregation spots within the community. The answer is yes, there will be. But I had guessed wrong several times in what my resident profile will be. And for example, I did a 43 home neighborhood in Mooresville that was near Mooresville Elementary, and I thought for sure this was going to be a family neighborhood. And so we spent a bunch of money on a playground, and nobody used it. And so what we told staff is that we have a couple of areas closer to Citadel that we've identified as two amenity areas. And depending on the resident profile, as we understand what our buyer is and who is living there, if it's a dog community, we like to have a dog park. If it's a neighborhood that has a lot of little kids, we'd like a tot lot or a picnic shelter or some gathering area. And so we've committed to, you know, one of those two areas being an amenity, but it would, it's still up in the air on what that would be because we just don't know what our residents are going to desire.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Any other questions? Does not look like it, so...
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, I have one other question.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
It looks like there's five-year vested rights. Is that being removed also? Because I noticed it was removed...
Yes.
For the previous petitions. Is that a new policy or a blanket policy? What's going on with the removal of the vested rights?
Staff's requested that it be removed, but the petitioner has discretion to continue to request or decide if they want to remove that. But it is one of our outstanding issues.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Did I have a second?
Correct.
Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so let's have a roll call vote on the closing of the public, a roll call vote on closing the public hearing. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So the next petition is number 35, rezoning petition 2021-243 by KEH Properties for approximately 1.5 acres, 1 point, I'm sorry, 0.15 acres located at Kennon and Harthorne, south of Parkwood. It's in District One. The current zoning is multifamily residential. The proposed zoning is mixed-use mud. Staff recommends approval of this petition. And if I pull up the speakers list, there... We have no opposition, so on this one, we would have, wait a minute. We don't have any opposition. Mr. Brown would be addressing for the petitioner.
I'll be...
I'm sorry, 35. I'm sorry, Mr. Ferguson.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson would be addressing. Mr. Petten?
All right. 2021-243 is 0.15 acres. It's at the intersection of Kennon Street and Hawthorne Lane. As mentioned, current zoning is R22 MF. Proposed zoning is for mud optional. The adopted future land use calls for single-family uses up to five DUA per site. This site also is shown as a neighborhood one on the 2040 policy map. The proposal is for an expansion of an existing 1,120 square foot commercial building, not to exceed 6,000 square feet total, and limits building height to 40 feet. Prohibited uses would be things like gas station, car wash, adult establishments, and accessory drive-through window. Does restrict outdoor uses from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and proposes optional provisions related to preserving the existing building while allowing some renovations and expansions. Parking, screening, and sidewalks to be included. Also, does provide access via driveway connection on Hawthorne Lane. Does note that parking would not be required, but petitioner may retain the existing parking as set forth in optional provisions. Does provide a six-foot sidewalk on the back of curb on Kennon Street, and Hawthorne is generally shown on the site plan. That would be, as proposed right now, required by expansion of the building by more than 25%. Does also state that when the sidewalk on Kennon Street is improved, curb cut on the street shall be removed, as generally shown on the site plan. That would be subject to approval of CDOT. And when the sidewalk on Hawthorne Lane is improved, curb cut closest to the intersection with Kennon Street shall be removed as well, generally shown on the site plan, also subject to CDOT approval. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. Have outstanding issues related to transportation, site building, design, and environment to work through. But again, we do support the petition, and we'll be happy to take any questions following the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, you're online. And I guess Ms. Devericks?
Yes. We're both on, but I probably will be the primary presenter on this. Honorable mayor, council committee, I'm Russell Ferguson here for the petitioner. My client, who is the owner and operator, owner of this building and the operator of Culture Shop, the current business operating there, is with us as well if you have any questions. Think I'm going to just kind of stay by saying this is a unique rezoning. We really appreciate staff's work, particularly CDOT, Mr. Petten working with us to use this existing building and to make sure we can find a way for its continued use. So most rezonings and most everything you've seen tonight is about rapid change or significant change. This rezoning is about preservation. We're trying to preserve this building, who was built in 1946, a 75-year-old building. It remains a legally operating, non-conforming use that was rezoned, I believe, in the 90s in an overlay rezoning. It has stayed, as you can see in the lower picture here, as a sort of a corner store. That changed a few years ago when Catherine took it over. Next slide, please. And you can see a little bit about what it looks like on the inside. This is a 1,000-square-foot building approximately. It is a teeny, tiny space. It has very few seats. It has a few parking spaces, although most of them would be noncompliant under the code, which is why they were being removed eventually. We've made some, we've worked on things. Next slide, please. We've taken reasonable restrictions here. We do come to you with the full support of the Belmont Community Association without anyone speaking against it. We've done outreach, and many of the neighbors, especially the immediate neighbors, are customers of this, of the Culture Shop. Regardless, without that pressure, we've still put some time, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Food required for onsite sales. Been working with staff to match other rezonings you may have seen. Next slide, please. Site plan is very simple, and a lot of the reasons for the conditions are here are that the one change, the one significant change we are making is to allow for seated dining and consumption onsite and to allow for those seats to occur on the patio. There are seats and have been seats out there throughout COVID. There haven't been any instances of noise ordinance violations or anything as such during that time. But it's a very important thing as the property values and costs and other code requirements come up, to be able to have that onsite consumption is a vital part of this business being able to continue and thus this building being able to be preserved. Next slide, please. The city is currently, you can see these cones, it's from just a few days ago. It may be cut up now. The city is working their way through on a city improvement project. As you can see here, this is a street, as you go to the north, that becomes residential. To the south behind this is more industrial areas, you get up towards Central Avenue. And there's already been some tightening with road markings. Next slide, please. Want to point out that while this doesn't fit into the original 2003 Belmont area plan, missing here is a community update, it does fit in there. This building's been called out specifically.
Mr. Ferguson, your time is up, so...
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right. So are there any questions for the petitioner?
Move to close.
All right. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Second. Ms. Johnson, on the motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right. The next item on our agenda is item 36, petition 2021-247 by HRLP Morrocroft, approximately seven and a half acres located east of Colony Road on the west side of now called Carnegie Boulevard, north of Fairview, it's in District Six. Current zoning is business shopping center. The proposed zoning is mixed-use development, optional. Staff recommends approval upon resolution of outstanding issues. In this case, under item 36, it's Mr. Brown, and you have no opposition, so you'll have the staff presentation, and you'll have three minutes, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2021-247, 7.56 acres, located on the east side of Colony Road, west of Morrison Boulevard, now named Carnegie Boulevard, north of Fairview, generally that Morrocroft area where the, I believe there's, is that the library there on the corner? Yeah, or the library is at the corner, Colony and Morrison. Site's currently zoned B1 SCD, which is a shopping center district. The proposed zoning is for mud O. The petition is from the future land use for the South Park small area plan, excuse me. Does recommend single-family, multifamily, and retail mix of uses. The site is shown as a regional activity center on the 2040 policy map, again effective on July 1st. The proposal is for up to 150,000 square feet of office uses. That would include the existing office building, and proposes to add just over 48,000 square feet of office uses to the site, essentially just filling in some areas that are underutilized within the site currently. It does also propose up to 14,000 square feet of retail, EDE, personal service, or other commercial uses with a max building height of 45 feet. Does provide a private street connection between Colony Road and Carnegie Boulevard, installs a continuous pedestrian connection throughout, proposes to close with barriers and or delineators the southbound free-flow right turn lane from Colony Road to Carnegie, and to allow for a test period for the proposed SCENIT project adjacent to the development. Does commit to architectural standards for exterior facade materials, streetscape, screening, percentage of windows and operable doors for new buildings, blank walls, et cetera. Also indicates the primary facades, entrances to include prominent entrances and other pedestrian-scale architectural features. Provides a minimum 4,000 square feet of amenitized open space, and also requests an optional provision to allow existing parking between the buildings and private street. That would be just for that existing parking, no new parking, I believe, is proposed to be between new buildings and the streets. So it would just be to maintain those existing spaces. Again, staff does recommend approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to site and building design, transportation, and environment. It is consistent with the South Park small area plan, and we'll be happy to take any questions following the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Evening, council members. Colin Brown with Alexander Ricks on behalf of the petitioner. Highwoods, I think some of y'all will recall Brian Leary, who was with us in Charlotte for a number of years. He's now working with the Highwoods Group and heading up this project. Brian's on vacation, so he's not with us tonight, but Randy from Highwoods is on if you have any questions. Great overview by Dave. This is very much a refresh of a property that has been in the area a long time. I think the Highwoods team is looking, this is a view of the office building today, which they're investing in and looking to keep it relevant. And Brian would tell you, you know, tenants there are looking for a place. If they're coming back to the office, they want a reason to go to the office. And so what you see here is there's a beautiful common area in the middle of the development, and Highwoods' idea is to use this as an opportunity to create some jewel box retail experiences that will be great for the tenants here, and we feel like provide an amenity for the folks in the Morrocroft neighborhood, give them some kind of very light neighborhood-serving retail to walk to. You are probably familiar with the South Park Library Branch. That is not included in our rezoning, but certainly an amenity in the area. We think bringing all of this together is really going to be positive. Good job by Dave going over the petition itself. Here's an aerial to show you the existing office buildings, or they're in yellow, existing parking decks in gray. In the white, you can see the new building footprints. So there's jewel boxes next to the existing pool in the middle, and then flanking the library, which currently townhomes are approved there, would be two small office buildings. Just to give you a look at how that looks on an aerial. Certainly, I don't think there are any speakers tonight. As you would expect, the folks with the South Park area neighbor Span are, continue to be involved negotiating with the team to make sure there are pedestrian amenities with this development that will serve the neighborhood. And our team continues to work with Span and CDOT, and I think we'll have some commitments on pedestrian amenities internal to the site and perhaps some contributions to the loop network. Just some conceptual images there so you can visualize what this could look like in the future. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for the petitioner?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right. The next item on our agenda is item 37, rezoning petition 2021-248 by Embree for approximately seven acres located at the northwest intersection of North Tryon Street and Otondo Avenue. It's in District One. The current zoning is general industrial. The proposed zoning is mixed-use development conditional. And we have, the staff recommends approval upon outstanding, resolution of outstanding issues. There are no, we do not have any opposition. Ms. Grant will speak for the petitioner. Mr. Petten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 2021-248, just over seven acres on North Tryon and Otondo Avenue. It is currently zoned I2, and its proposed zoning is for mud conditional with no optional provisions, just conditional mud. The North Tryon area plan does recommend industrial warehouse and distribution land uses at the site. The site is also shown as manufacturing logistics on the 2040 policy map. The proposal is for up to 410 multifamily dwelling units in one building. Does limit maximum building height to 90 feet and provides access to the site via Otondo Avenue. Does provide a buffered bike lane along North Tryon Street, as well as an eight-foot planting strip and eight-foot sidewalk along all frontages. Does dedicate 30 feet of right-of-way from the center line of Otondo and 40 feet from the center line of North Tryon. Does have some architectural details. Essentially, the site would adhere to TODCC for building articulation, and also will be placed to present a front or side facade to all networked streets. Long pitched or flat roof lines shall avoid continuous expanses without some variation, including changes in heights. Ventilation grates located at the first floor level in the building facade must be included as decorative. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. Do have some outstanding issues related to transportation to work through, but again, we do recommend approval upon resolution of those, and we'll be happy to take any questions following the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Grant?
Good evening, Mayor Lyles, Mayor Protem, members of council, and members of the zoning committee. Bridget Grant, land use consultant with Maury and Ben Allen, working with my colleague Jeff Brown, and the Embree team on this rezoning. We're also supported by Land Design on site design and DRG on transportation aspects. I know it's been a long night, so I'm just going to jump to this one slide. We opted to do a mud conditional zoning here because we're transitioning away from some of the TOD, but wanted to provide certainty on the development standards and maximum height. You can see from where we're located, we are very much consistent with what's happening along this corridor. And with that, we are pleased to answer any questions and keep this brief.
Are there any questions for the petitioner?
Move to close.
Mr. Phipps has a question.
Who has a question?
Mr. Phipps.
Who? Mr. Phipps. Mr. Phipps? You have a question for Ms. Grant or Dave?
Yeah, I was wondering, any idea on the proposals for those two amenity areas there on the site plan?
The amenity areas will both include things that are geared towards the residents. They're internal to the site.
I noticed also, I saw a note about relocating a stream. Could you talk briefly about that?
I believe we have Amy on the line from Land Design, and if not, I can speak to the fact that we are working to address some of the environmental issues that are on the site.
I think you're going to have to follow up with him, Ms. Grant.
We will follow up. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Phipps, anything, did you have anything else?
That was it.
All right. Mr. Winston?
Yes, some of, my question was actually going to be around certain environmental concerns or questions. I know that's been an industrial site, or I don't know if it's industrial, but there's been heavy industry there. I know a lot of construction things, and who knows what has been there in the past. Are there any concerns about the viability of the soil or any type of, I don't want to say brownfield, because I know that's a specific legal situation, but is there any, what's in the dirt there, basically?
We have Joel Albee with Embry on, and he can address those questions. Joel, are you able to unmute? Councilman Winston, I might be left solo today. Just got a text that he was able to jump in, but we may be having some technical issues.
I believe he can speak. You are unmuted now, Joel.
So Ms. Grant, you'll have to get back with the staff and Mr. Winston so that we can get, all of us can get that information as a follow-up, okay?
We are happy to do so.
All right. Mr. Winston, did you have anything else?
No, that was.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear.
Yeah.
Oh, now we can hear you, Joel.
Sorry, experiencing some technical difficulties. So we, the soil has been tested. We're waiting on final results of the test, but our plan is to enter this site into a brownfield program where we would address any of those contaminations and make sure that we're below any required levels to ensure the safety of our future residents.
So am I, are we assuming that this is a brownfield site? Is that, is that, is that why you're taking that proactive approach?
Correct. We're assuming based on the industrial uses of the existing site that there would be some contaminations at a level that would allow us to enter the brownfields program.
And I don't want to ask his question for him, but are there any concerns, is that, is that brownfield kind of contained right now? And is, would there be concerns that once we start moving it, moving dirt, that we can possibly contaminate surrounding waterways that are maybe are not being contaminated right now?
So all contamination, to our knowledge, is contained on-site at this time. The site is actually going to be a fill site, so we're not going to be hauling any dirt off to go anywhere else with it. The stream that is on-site is currently in very poor shape. It's got a few crossings, and it's not well protected. Our intent is to, relocating the stream is to restore that stream, make it a site amenity, and then through this whole brownfield process, there will be systems in place that ensure that there will be no contamination from the site into the stream. The whole goal is to improve the stream and the environmental quality of the site moving forward.
Okay, so you said that the dirt would not be hauled off, so would that mean the contaminants would stay, stay on the site?
Yeah, most brownfield programs actually, the goal is to keep them on-site and then find a way to remediate them on-site, so you're not moving contaminations around and cross-contaminating other sites.
Somehow stabilizing the soil.
Correct.
All right, I would love, we would love to follow up later on to learn more about that.
Yeah, happy to fill you in on process.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to close? Second. All right, a motion to close and a second. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms., Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Dreg?
Yeah.
All right, the next item is item thirty-nine, petition twenty twenty-one, two fifty-four by Joseph Horton for approximately two point one acres located southwest of Galleria Boulevard and Monroe Road, south of Sardis. It's in District 6. The current zoning is Neighborhood Services. The proposed zoning is Neighborhood Services with a flight, flight plan and movement. Okay. Site plan amendment. Thank you. Mr. Petten, you're up, and then we have Mr. Longcor, or Mr. Horton, and Mr. Horton, you'll have three minutes each.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John Kinley is going to.
Three minutes for the petitioner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John Kinley with the rezoning team is going to present this one for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So this is two point one eight acres at the southwest intersection of Galleria Boulevard and Monroe Road, south of Sardis Road North. You see, it's an existing, it's actually an EDE, existing EDE, and you'll note, I'll just note that there's, see the existing circulation around the back of the south side of the building, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit on the presentation. The current zoning is Neighborhood Services, and they're requesting a Neighborhood Services site plan amendment. The Independence Boulevard area plan recommends residential office retail uses for the site, and the site is shown as a community activity center on the 2040 policy map, which will be effective July 1st. The proposal would be to basically keep the existing EDE and allow the addition of a drive-through service lane for that use. Would not change any of the parking or driveway layout in the site. Basically, would utilize that existing circulation around the back of the site to accommodate that proposed drive-through lane. It's wide enough to accommodate two lanes of traffic, so basically the drive-through lane plus a bypass lane next to that. It provides right-of-way dedication and notes future link silver line along Monroe Road and removes the existing back curb sidewalk and establishes an eight-foot planting strip and six-foot sidewalk, or sorry, multi-use path, a twelve-foot multi-use path along Monroe Road, and reconstructs the curb ramps at Galleria Boulevard. Staff doesn't have any outstanding issues on this petition. We recommend approval. It is consistent with the Independence Boulevard area plan's recommendation for residential office retail use, and I'll take any questions after the petitioner's presentations.
All right. Mr. Horton and Mr. Longcor?
I will be the one speaking. Joe is actually not going to be on this call, but my name is Jeff Longcor. I'm with CESO, representative.
Could you lean into your mic a little bit more, Mr. Longcor?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So my name is Jeff Longcor. I'm with CESO, Inc. I am representing city barbecue and the property owner on this rezoning amendment case. I think John with the staff, you know, pretty much summed it up of what we're hoping to achieve here by adding a small building bump out to accommodate a drive-through. The site, as was mentioned, we think the circulation will work great with a few tweaks, and obviously, we've met with staff and implemented any concerns or comments they have, so we feel confident about our plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Are there any questions for the petitioner?
Moved close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second.
Mr. Winston just put his hand up.
Who put his hand?
Mr. Winston.
Mr. Winston?
So staff, this question is for staff. You meant, you mentioned the silver line. Are you saying that the proposed route for the silver line will go down this portion of Monroe Road?
Yes, that's correct. It'll be along, I think CATS confirmed that it would be on this side of Monroe Road, so they worked with CATS to identify where that would be, and they'll be dedicating a right-of-way to accommodate that alignment.
Yes, I would definitely, I would have some concerns about putting a drive-through on that, that it looks like it, I don't know if it looks like it would be on to. I'd like to take a, take a look with, with the petitioner, take a closer look at this, because I'm just trying to read some very small print to see how that would interact with that right-of-way. So thank you. That's, that's the only question or comment that I have.
Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, I'll just add, we have real-life problems out there today, and a future world of, of car uncentric travel is, is one thing. Basing, you know, our today decisions on the silver line is a total different thing. I think that's, that's not even relevant or realistic. Moved to close.
Well, as a, as a, as a resident that frequents that part of town, because it's in close location to my children's school, I kind of disagree with that, but we can go ahead with closing this public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Dreg?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item forty, was, I'm sorry. It is now nine, nine nineteen. We usually are closed, we close our hearings at ten o'clock, and we have now, how many more to go?
Nine left.
Nine that are left. So we may not.
Madam Mayor, is it possible, because how many, how many have opposition folks?
We have one more with opposition, and it is item forty-four.
Perhaps I'd recommend we try to bump that one up, just so folks here get their chance. Thanks.
I think that's a yes vote. So we'll go ahead and move this opposition, and then we'll see how we can do with the remaining ones to see if, how many we can get through without opposition. All right, so you have hit the jackpot today on item forty-four, petition twenty twenty-one dash two sixty-three by Colwick Development for approximately two point eight acres located, oh, yeah, northeast intersection of Colwick and Chiswick, south of Greenwich and east of Randolph, in District 6. Current zoning is office. The proposed zoning is mixed-use development. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Brown will manage the four, and we have five people with against, and I think all of them are, when I call your name, let me know if you're present, or if you, if not, we'll assume you're virtual. Leanna Humphrey?
Here.
Okay. Rodrick Heinst?
Here.
All right. Kelly Hoss?
Yeah.
Forrest Stewart? He just walked out?
He's online.
Oh, Forrest Stewart, online, virtual. And Warren Snowden.
Here.
All right. You'll have ten minutes. I hope you'll coordinate your remarks, all right? We'll go ahead and hear from the staff.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty twenty-one, two sixty-three, two point eight acres. As mentioned, it's at the northeast intersection of Colwick Road and Chiswick Road, south of Greenwich Road, and east of Randolph Road. The current zoning is O-2. The proposed zoning is mud conditional, again, just mud with no options. The South District Plan recommends multifamily uses for the site. The site is also shown as Neighborhood 2 on the 2040 policy map. The proposal is for two development areas. Development Area A is the space there on the left-hand side of the plan. That would be proposed to develop up to two hundred and sixty multifamily dwelling units with a maximum building height of eighty-five feet. Area B, which is at the corner of Colwick, that is to develop up to thirty thousand square feet of office uses with a max building height of sixty feet. That also would specifically prohibit things like car washes, automobile service stations, EDEs with accessory drive-throughs, and so that would be all prohibited in that development area B. Vehicular access to Area A would be from two driveways off Colwick, and then access to Area B would be one driveway on Colwick Road and one on Chiswick Road. They would propose upgrades to crosswalks and ramps at the intersection of Randolph Road and Greenwich Road, provides paved pedestrian connection between Cotswold Elementary and Linda Lane if approved by CMS and CDOT. Also constructs an eight-foot planting strip and eight-foot sidewalk along Colwick Road, and commits to buildings that are over sixty-five feet in height would be built to environmentally sensitive, efficient standards. Architectural standards have been worked into the proposal for both buildings as well, and there's also the installation of a ten-and-a-half-foot-wide landscape area planted to a classy buffer standard along that eastern property line. That's the area adjacent to the R3 zone parcel on Chiswick Road. You can see that identified by a green line there on the left, lower left, or excuse me, right-hand side of the screen. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. We do have some outstanding issues related to transportation, as well as some technical revisions related to site and building design that still need to be resolved. It is consistent with the recommendation for multifamily uses in Area A and inconsistent with the recommendation for multifamily use in Area B. That's the area where, again, those offices are proposed. The site currently is located in the Cotswold Mixed Use Activity Center. So again, staff does recommend approval of this petition, and we'll be happy to take any questions following the presentations. Thank you.
All right. So we'll start our presentation with Mr. Brown.
Evening, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers Colin Brown, again, on behalf of the petitioner. The Fallon Companies, this is continuing a bit of a theme from tonight, where we're having consternation about new development, about density, about, you know, more intense housing types. I think most of the, and we started a conversation with the neighborhood, generally the neighborhood layers in the neighborhood called the Wicks behind us, which has all the streets ending in Wick. I think we had an initial conversation with them in November, have followed up and had multiple meetings. I think, you know, as we've heard tonight, the primary concern is, is transportation. But as you all know, we, we have to do something to accommodate housing in our area, and of, when we look at all the places where they can go, I think this just makes a lot of sense. I'll review the land use plan for you, as well as existing zoning, to put some of that in context. But here is the site, almost three acres in the Cotswold Center, which has been designated as a mixed-use center for a number of years. You can see we've got adjacency to an elementary school, some office uses. Literally, right out the front door is the kind of urban Publix. Across the street is the older Cotswold Center, but I think when we, you know, we saw that urban Publix a few years ago, it may have been a little bit of, have its time, but I think the vision for this small area has been this, and urbanization and densification of this area. We, you know, as we look at our 2040 plan and map, there are a whole lot of areas where we're saying we can put density, and so it's either on a transit line or it's in a mixed-use center, and this is one of those, the mixed-use center, and it's, we think, well-located. Couple aerials, I think you're familiar with it. This is what the site used to look like. It is now vacant. The current zoning on the site is Office 2, so that is our kind of general office zoning. That's significant, because one of the other things that we've talked about in the zoning is height. The building height that we're proposing, the max, we've looked at two areas, the maximum, which is further from the neighborhood, would be about eighty, eighty-five feet. The existing O-2 zoning allows heights like that. So what you can see here in the image I have on the screen is the Sonic Headquarters. That building's probably forty-plus years old, is about eighty feet tall. So that we're asking for eighty-five feet of height. I don't think we're setting any new precedents, and we think that the heights we're talking about are probably allowed under current zoning. We talked a little bit about tonight about the old plan, the new plan. As Dave mentioned, I think the old plan recommends this for multifamily, which we are. The new plan coming along recommends this for Neighborhood 2, which we think fits perfectly. Obviously, the residential portion of the site, we would also have a small office component. So I think we're consistent with both plans. As Dave mentioned, we're rezoning to a mud conditional. We've got two development areas. One is up to the, the north there, the higher portion, is the area where the multifamily would be proposed, up to two hundred and sixty multifamily units, and the maximum height there, that's further from the single-family neighborhood, is eighty-five feet. Down on the corner, the lower area is Development Area B, that would be for a small office building. So at about sixty feet, so it's probably a three-story office building. We think that's a nice transition to the neighborhood. It's worth noting that the single-family home you can see just there to the right is also owned by the property owners, but it is not part of our rezoning. It will remain and serve as a buffer, so we really have no adjacency to single-family. Again, on the theme of transportation, which we've talked a lot about tonight, and I always say, we, we talk about it every night, or I have a community meeting everywhere in Charlotte, we talk about congestion. This is not a site due to the intensity. It did not trigger a traffic study. That is not required. However, in our initial meetings with the neighborhood, that is exactly what everyone wants to talk about. So we have engaged DRG. Michael Wickline is on the call tonight to do a TTM, a traffic analysis, working with CDOT to look at intersections that would be impacted, how they would be impacted. So we have done that work. You know, CDOT's report is that there are minimal impacts. We've heard folks say tonight, hey, we've read that before, but we're out here, and, you know, you've got all these, and there are some very autocentric uses out there, so we certainly know that there's congestion. We're open to discussions with the neighborhood. It, it's tough, and certainly, we understand concerns about impact on the neighborhood behind us on Chiswick Road. We have not really been able to reach a consensus on improvements that would be desired. I think some folks said, hey, we'd love for that to be. I think some folks said, hey, we'd love for that to become a choker street, or we'd love some speed bumps on it. We're open to that, but I think there are kind of competing interests to the neighborhood, folks that want that and don't. But if there is a consensus, this development team is certainly interested in continuing to talk with the neighborhood and CDOT about some improvements, you know, in or around the site that would mitigate some of the real, you know, traffic issues that that neighborhood faces with or without this development. Again, we think this is the, you know, in all the areas that we're looking at, this is really where we need to be putting density. We've got a mixed-use center that has been a mixed-use center for over fifty years. We have an old, the prior land use recommendation supports multifamily. The new twenty forty map supports it. We have a zoning district now that allows this height. And this may be the case, that, you know, when the new UDO is adopted and the remapping is done, I think this would get a N-two designation anyway and allow this type of development. So I think there's a good chance our future ordinance allows the multifamily to occur. The N-two would not allow the office that we have on the corner. I, I think, and I'll let the neighborhood speak for themselves, I think that's been received probably better, because that's a, we're committing to lower the height significantly less than what's allowed under the existing zoning and would be allowed under N-two going forward. So I think those are some of the positives. Again, here are just some renderings that we put together so you can kind of see this in context. The new multifamily building is up in that right-hand corner. So you can imagine the massing and the scale of that. To the left of that is just the box. That's where the office building would go. We've not rendered that out, but just really showing the size and the scale in context with the Cotswold Center. And then transitioning to the neighborhood, again, that first home there is actually owned by the same property owner that's involved in this development, but we decided not to bring that into our rezoning. But that, we, we think provides a nice buffer there. I've got one other rendering from here, just from Colwick, so you can imagine what that looks like as that street becomes more pedestrian, more walkable. You can see there are access points. Really, the design team has done some work to break up that building. On the right-hand side there, you see some surface parking. That would be surface parking for the new office building. So you've got, you know, kind of a, an urban multifamily component, and then the new office building would feel a little bit suburban. It would be a lower slung building, surface parked, much less intense, but we think it's a, a nice transition, and the two of these together provide a mixture of uses in the neighborhood. Nate Doolittle from Land Design is here, if you have questions about our site design. And Michael Wickline is on for questions about traffic. We've had a long night, so I'll go ahead and, I'll pause there, and we'll appear for the neighbors and then have you take questions and respond after.
Thank you. All right, so if you guys want to come up. And I first have, unless you've worked out a different plan, I have Ms. Humphrey first, followed by Mr. Heinst, and then Ms. Ho, Hoche.
Mister.
Mister Kelly, thank you, sorry about that. All of the Kellies I know are women. And then we have the virtual Forrest Stewart, and then Warren Snowden. So go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor Lyles, Mayor Protem, and council members for hearing us. And Mr. Bakari, I appreciate you moving us up in the agenda so that we have the opportunity to address you. My name's Leanna Humphrey, and I'm here representing the Wicks neighborhood, which Mr. Brown described, is right adjacent to this property. And as the homeowner is closest to and most impacted by this proposed redevelopment, we, we respectfully ask that the developer further address some of our concerns prior to this coming back to city council. We, we realize that housing is desperately needed here in Charlotte and that redevelopment of this property is inevitable, particularly in a desirable location such as ours. So we're, you know, we're, we're realistic about that, but we don't believe that the growth in our city should be at the expense of our neighborhood character, the vehicular and pedestrian safety, as well as our beautiful tree canopy in this city. So, you know, there've been several references to the twenty forty plan and the UDO today, and we think that, that we're really, you know, hopeful about how those address all of these concerns, but we're not seeing that reflected in these proposals. But we do hope that even though the UDO has not passed yet, that, that, you know, because it does have broad support, support from citizens, that this would be considered as part of this proposal. So specifically, in order to preserve neighborhood character, we're requesting that the apartment building, which currently stands at six stories, also overlooks, directly overlooks an elementary school. It would be built right up to the property line with the elementary school. We are requesting that they lower the height of that apartment building. In the UDO, it would specify that within two hundred feet of a residential property, the max height there would be six, sixty-five feet, and it is within that distance from residential property. So we're requesting that that be, be lowered. Similarly, the office building, that's actually a hundred feet from the closest residential property. So the max height there should be fifty feet, again, according to the, the draft UDO. And, and you can kind of see it in some of the renderings. I mean, what we're talking about is adjacency to a very modest, brick ranch neighborhood. So there's a big kind of height differential in, in those buildings. Secondly, to preserve or to protect vehicular and pedestrian safety, we'd like to see some additional, additional infrastructure investments on Colwick Road. The developer mentioned Chiswick, and certainly that's a concern about traffic coming through the residential neighborhood, but frankly, Colwick is where all the congestion is today. The traffic study that they conducted failed to mention the eighteen-wheeler trucks that come up Colwick and then do this crazy maneuver to back into the loading dock behind Publix. Often, when there's a truck there, it just stops any kind of traffic on that street because of the, the angles that they have to kind of reverse into the loading dock. It's also, the traffic study also neglected to note that Colwick is on a bus route, and so the CATS buses actually stop on Colwick. It's the end of the route for the number fifteen bus, and it waits there on Colwick to catch up to its schedule before it heads back uptown. So not only do we have these eighteen-wheelers, we've got CATS buses and lots of other activity on what is, you know, really a very narrow street. And then the last thing, of course, is the school, right? So we've got school carpool. One of the things that we love about our neighborhood is its walkability. Our children walk to Cotswold Elementary. We walk to restaurants and shops in the Cotswold Center, and some of us run a walk for exercise. And so all of this is a concern as we think about how to navigate Colwick with, you know, potentially an additional four hundred cars coming in and out of those two hundred and sixty apartments. The last thing I'll mention is the tree canopy, and we would like to see more efforts to preserve the more than sixty healthy, mature trees that are currently on the perimeter of that property. The development, as it's currently drawn, would go right up to the border of the property, and so we would like to see some kind of tree save along that property border to ensure that, you know, better quality of air for the children in the elementary school, as well as more privacy, you know, since these apartments will be directly overlooking that school. So I think with that, I will hand it off to one of my neighbors.
Thanks. Rod Heinst, I live a little bit farther back, but part of the Cotswold neighborhood. Just to hit real quick, because we've got other people. Basically, the traffic and in and outs of that neighborhood are very difficult. So you've got Sharon Amity, where you can only make a right, and then you've got Greenwich, which is the light, and then there's a cut-through back into Publix. The road really isn't even a road that goes through there. It's a, it's a back alley neighborhood road. And so to, through the times of rush hour, all of Randolph is jammed, and so people try to cut through there. And then also, school drop-off, people are backed up there, school pickup, people are backed up there, and the size of the, the complex just doesn't add up with all that traffic that we have. Lastly, that I'll just end on this, the folks at Sonic Automotive understand the traffic is so bad, they hire a police officer to stop traffic so they can get in and out. They understand how bad the traffic is, and so they hire officers to stop so they can get in and out of traffic. But now we're adding another four hundred-plus people. Thank you.
Can I please get a time check?
Time check.
Madam Clerk?
Four minutes.
Fantastic. Thank you all for, for this opportunity this evening. My name's Kelly Hoss, and so many great points have been raised throughout the evening. School safety is the one that I care about. Frankly, the traffic, the congestion, the growth, we all know those things are going to happen. I have serious concerns about a six-story building looming over the front entrance of a school with carpool drop-off and buses. I think in this world that we live in, I think we should look much more closely before approving this motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one, I guess, with us virtually, but Forrest, do you mind if I go first? I'll take that as a yes. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Yield his time. Forrest, we'll talk later.
He's speaking. How many? The clock has stopped? Did you stop it, Forrest? All right. For two people, three, three minutes and twenty-eight seconds.
Forrest, would you like to speak?
Warren, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, staff. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I think tonight's discussion, really, as we've heard many times before, it's about the inconsistent densities that we're finding in our neighborhoods, landing on our doorsteps. Is a, I should say, my name is Warren Snowden, and I represent effectively Linda Lane, which happens to be just on the other side of the school. Incidentally, because of the school, twenty-five percent of the neighborhood doesn't receive a letter of notice. The school is unable to make comments, our understanding, but we'd really like to see an impact study done on behalf of the school, as we talked about with Kelly. I don't know that that's taken place, but, you know, our concerns are similar to the other petitions that we've heard this evening, where the proposed redevelopment is, got such an increased level of density that we really feel like that there is going to be adverse effects on our quality of life, on our infrastructure, and certainly on the, on our families and our children's safety. I'm a graduate of Charlotte Mecklenworth School. I'm a Charlotte native. I get growth. I actually support development, but I support good development. And I support development that adheres to standards that really engage the community. And I'll give an example. When Publix came in in twenty sixteen and stood before us, they didn't care three hundred feet. They wanted to talk to the neighbors. They knew that building consensus was the way to do this, and so our house hasn't moved, but we're not, we're actually closer to this redevelopment than we were to Publix, but we've had no engagement, no, no involvement with this. So it's kind of challenging for us. We're coming in a little bit late, but again, we're not against development or redevelopment. We just like to really make sure that it's the right fit, and I think that'll be a win-win for the developer. It'll also provide the retail that we want, but also the safety for our schools and for our children. So I would kind of wrap up and suggest that, you know, we want to preserve our neighborhood. We think that's a fair request. We think that that is something that needs to be adhered, whether it's under yesterday's plan or the Neighborhood Two plan, which incidentally has lower heights to it as well. But we also want to suggest that the traffic study that we witnessed doesn't necessarily reflect the conditions. We've seen that with others this evening as well. The school drop-off, the, the stacking that we see, there's a lot more going on than I think what a study that was paid for by the developer probably alludes to. And I think the police officer actually at Sonic, helping their own associates get in and out of the neighborhood, couldn't be a better example of, of the concerns that we already have. So we really appreciate the time to speak with you and, and hope we can reach a, a great consensus with Colin and his team. So thank you.
All right. Mister Stewart, how many, how many seconds are left? Forty-two seconds, Mister Stewart.
All right, well, I'm from Alabama.
Speak up a little bit closer, please. We can't hear you. Come up to your mic.
Can you hear me okay?
Better, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm from Alabama, so speaking quickly is not my strong suit, but I, I would just say, to dial it into the congestion, Colwick is a narrow street, and it also is not a wide street. So you've got, on one end, you've got the school traffic coming in twice a day, and on the other side, you've got Sonic plus Sharon Amity and Randolph intersection, which is one of the thirty-two, you know, most congested traffic intersections in Section One or District One of Charlotte. And so you throw in Chiswick, and now adding over two hundred and fifty people trying to get to work, it's not like they're walking to work.
All right, I, I, I'm sorry to cut you off. If you want to send us your remarks or email them to any of the council members or, or your, feel free to do that, please. And I think we've heard from your neighbors, and so just send us, send us an email. That, that always works. All right, I have Mister Driggs, followed by Mayor.
Rebuttal.
I'm sorry.
Rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mister Brown, rebuttal.
Yes, thank you. You know, a lot of the, I think a lot of the comments we've taken can be viewed, you know, two ways. A couple of comments about, you know, bus service on the street, I think is a positive. We think the proximity to the school is a positive. CMS, my policy doesn't allow us to engage with the individual principals. However, we have been in contact with CMS Real Estate staff, have indicated to us this is supportive. This is bringing in a new type of housing, where we can have folks that work at schools have relatively more affordable housing within walking distance to CMS, so we think it's a positive. I have not heard any concerns about safety concerns related to a multifamily building. In fact, the comments I did hear was this would be a much improvement over what was there previously. We're happy to continue talking with the neighborhood. We have had multiple meetings with folks, and it may be that, you know, I think some folks have balled down, perhaps had not been in those conversations. We're happy to, to keep discussing. This is a good development team. We think it's the right site for this. You know, we've got to build housing somewhere. You know, there's, we, we can find fault with any site, but here we are in a mixed-use center with a lot of amenities nearby, with transit, with schools, with employment, groceries, all within, not even a ten-minute walk. This is a three-minute walk. So this is certainly an appropriate site for that, and we're happy to continue engaging with the neighbors and certainly Councilmember Bakari in this conversation as we move forward.
All right, thank you very much. So we'll start Mister Bakari, followed by Mister. Driggs, followed by Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Well, neighbors, thanks so much for coming out. Sorry you've had to bear with us this long, but you got a little taste of our lives here. So, so, you know, I, I'm just, this one's kind of been in my periphery for a while. I, I've seen it there, but, you know, it, it wasn't one that jumped up to my attention that it was, there was a lot of, you know, potential contention with it. And, and over the last week, I've gotten a flurry of communication from folks. So I, I touched base with Colin, the petitioner, and just kind of had asked some questions. Who's, you know, have, have there been community conversations? And I've gotten, you know, a view that there, there have been, but perhaps people are paying attention now more so than before. And I think that leads us to a point of, we need to roll up our sleeves real quick and all kind of come together and have some, some material conversations. Thirty days is not an incredible amount of time. So Mister Brown, I, I don't know if you'd be willing, but if you could talk to the developers and see, you know, what kind of timeline can we get on here where we can have a series of meetings? Clearly, there, there's some organized homeowners association meetings and others, or groups and others. So can we pull some points of contact in and actually sit down and see where are we at? We've got a laundry list of kind of the concessions that have been asked for, height reductions. You know, I, I want to take a look with staff if we can, both planning and rezoning, as well as CDOT and CATS and others, and, and get a holistic look of the buses, of, you know, what, some of the things we've, we've got planned there with our, our theoretical bus investments coming up, as well as the tree canopy and tree save with the arborists. So there's going to be a lot of stuff. I'm optimistic that hopefully maybe we can get that done and find the concessions and get to a point where we can find middle ground that everyone likes. But if not, Mister Brown, I'd ask you to float with the, the developer to see if we, if we might be able to buy ourselves some more time, because this is, you know, there are small scopes and there are larger scopes. This feels like a larger scope, and there's going to be a lot of work to do. So I think that's point one, and then point two is, every single comment we've made about Fifty-One, or Providence, or any other street, we've, we've discussed today about the lack of our investment in capital and infrastructure, and, and our failure, quite honest, to be quite honest, over the last several years, to prioritize infrastructure around all this growth that we, our policy states we need. We need the density. We have to solve this. We've said the same thing every single month for the last five years I've been here, so hopefully we will gain the appetite. So hopefully, we will gain the appetite to actually address that as a group, although I'm not optimistic, because it hasn't happened even remotely to date. So with that, Mr. Brown, any quick comments on what I've said, because it's a tall order?
No. Happy to continue working. I just need to confirm with our development team that we've got some additional time, but I'll circle back, I'll confirm and circle back with you.
All right. Well, no matter what, let's go ahead tomorrow and start scheduling the meetings. And neighbors, if you guys can identify the smallest group of leaders that represent the most of the impacted organizations and neighborhoods, so that we can kind of have a small group to be able to coordinate back with the broader neighborhoods, but then have, you know, a nimble discussion and negotiation with the petitioner, that would be what would help me out most, if you guys can. Thank you.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes. So I remember when we approved the Publix, I thought that layout was very peculiar with the school and the way you enter and leave the store, so it's interesting to hear about it again. I have a short question, which, Ms. Humphrey, I think I'll put to you. Listening to all this, I'm not sure whether I'm hearing from residents, excuse me, that there is a, that there is a set of adjustments that might get you to the point of being willing to withdraw your objections to this? Or do we have a situation where the residents are categorically opposed, and there is no fine tuning that's going to fix that?
So I'll just speak for the Wicks, since that's really kind of the group of neighbors that I represent. But I think we recognize that development is going to occur on this parcel. I mean, it's been sitting empty for several years. So it's more about sort of what that development looks like. And again, we're not opposed to multifamily housing. That certainly is what it's zoned for in the 2040 plan. So I think it's just about trying to come to some agreement with the developer around what that housing looks like. And frankly, with all the feedback that we've provided thus far, there's been no changes or concessions made in any of the plans that they've presented.
So if any of the other speakers has a different answer to that question, by all means, but otherwise, I would just encourage you to work together and try to establish just a bargaining position, like these things would work for us or they won't. Because if you're not holding out the prospect that you might withdraw your opposition to it, they don't have much incentive, you know, to make any concessions. So I'm going to want to look at this myself. I think it's another interesting case, like a few of mine. Appreciate your being here tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, followed by Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I do have a couple of questions. Well, I'll just address really the one that we just talked about. Ms. Humphries, you said that you all are not opposed to multifamily housing, but then I think, is it Mr. Host? Am I saying that right? You had said that you had concerns about an apartment complex next to a school. So is that just two different points of view?
No, to clarify, it's more about the size.
We really have to, you're going to have to come up to the podium? Sorry. We have to, you're on the record now. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. I'm not opposed to multifamily housing. I'm concerned about the size and the number of units for the amount of space. It's about 2.8 acres, 260 units. Sounds incredibly high. I believe the previous space had 60 units. I think the one we were talking about earlier across from Providence Road.
The one at Providence and 51?
Much, much larger with, it's just way too small for this many units. I'm not opposed to multifamily housing, but six stories looming over an elementary school just feels really big. It doesn't feel like it fits in.
Okay. So that, to me, feels a little bit different than what you had indicated before from a, I thought you were sort of making reference to a securities, from a security standpoint next to a school.
I don't, I think those are things that you all probably deal with every single day. I do have concerns about that, more from the height than just pure visibility right into the school. I recognize that school borders are school borders and many times out of the jurisdiction of these conversations, which I think is one of the challenges. I don't know where Charlotte Mecklenburg School stands on this. I know that school safety is really important. The thought of having a really large building directly looking into a carpool line, a bus line, front door of an elementary school, I just, that's worth thinking about.
Yeah. Thanks for clarifying that. For staff, what is the, because we talk about this all the time. What does CMS think? And, you know, CMS gives us the numbers. It would go from this overcrowding to that overcrowding, which every school's overcrowded. But why is it they can't weigh in? We've asked them before if they would weigh in on rezonings. Is there actually, is that just a CMS policy that doesn't allow them? Because I've yet to see, I think we had one rezoning where CMS school board members came and spoke relative to it, but.
Right. And that was for, I think that was for their own school.
Well, no, this was a few years ago.
Okay. Yeah. I know we had one recently.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We remember that one.
Sorry to bring that, yeah. We remember that one. That's actually the first I've kind of heard that.
Maybe it's a CMS policy.
Yeah. I'm not aware. I know we usually just ask them for the student generation numbers, but I'm not sure where some of those other.
May I respond from a governmental standpoint?
No. Wait, wait, we're getting, we're getting too many people. I've got, first, Dave was still talking, and then I think Mr. Driggs wanted to address after Mr. Petten did, so.
Yeah, I was about.
And then Mr. Winston, we'll put you in the queue after Mr. Driggs. The queue already. I understand this, I do have, I do have, I have everyone, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Winston, and Ms. Ashmira to speak.
I'll take this offline, too, in the interest of time. I'm just curious because I haven't heard that.
That's the first I've heard of his staff.
I'll have a short answer to your question.
I think just go in order, Mr. Driggs.
No, I'm just telling you when my turn comes.
Okay. Okay. So I am curious about that, but I just, in general, I think it's pretty over scale. Sort of fit into this very small area on a very small road, so I do have concerns about the size of it. Just wanted to clarify the multifamily comment, because from a security standpoint, personally, I think I'd rather have residential than retail right next to the school, at least, you know. But regardless, I think overall, I have concerns about the size of this project. Thank you.
Agreed.
All right. So I'm going to just go in the order that I had. Mr. Driggs was next, followed by Ms. Ashmira, Ms. Johnson, and Mr. Winston. So if Mr. Driggs is next, Ms. Ashmira, Ms. Johnson, and Mr. Winston.
So since the question came up, and I've asked it of school principals and of school board members, it appears that the attitude of CMS is sort of like a reverse Field of Dreams thing. If they come, we will build it. And they, but seriously, what the principal said was, if we get this influx, we don't want to disturb the migration of people, and we will respond to situations. The difficulty with it is that there is a lag, and during that time, there are a lot of trailers and stuff. And then finally, you get to the point where the situation at the school does warrant a capital investment, and so that's their thought. Their thought is, we're not going to kind of try to control the migration into the area. We're going to respond to that. But it takes them a long time to do it. Thank you.
I think, and this is just a question I have, I don't, I feel like that might be a principal's view. I don't know if there's a public policy. I mean, I don't know if that is the policy of the school board. So I just want to be clear on that. I understand that it's practically what we all see.
I don't think there is a policy, but just tell me that that's kind of the attitude.
Yeah. I understand the attitude, but I want to make sure that we're not defining policy for CMS. So I have next Ms. Ashmira.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know one of the speakers, I think Ms. Humphrey had brought this up about pedestrian safety, and this development being so close to the school, I'm concerned about the lack of infrastructure. So if one of the speakers could just elaborate on the pedestrian safety and what are the infrastructure needs? Are we talking about the sidewalks? And then after Mr., after one of the speakers does address my question, I would like to see if petitioner can address some of those infrastructure needs through this development.
Ms. Humphrey, I think, if I recall, when we were talking about how the buses work and the walkability of the school, again, another issue with the schools when we start talking about those kinds of, how do you move people around, buses and all of that? So would you comment as a parent, what you guys do and the infrastructure that you use currently? I think that's Ms. Ashmira's request.
Yes. So certainly sidewalks are really critical to safety with walking, and we are fortunate to have those, and I know those will be, continue in this plan. I think the concern is more from a place of just how many vehicle, additional vehicles will be on the streets as kids are crossing over, you know, these roads as they're walking to and from school. So it's less about the, we're fortunate in our neighborhood that we have a lot of sidewalks and certainly want to preserve those. It's just the additional cars and on top of the buses and trucks that I mentioned earlier. So I don't have any specific thoughts right now about what the developer could do to address that, other than just our overall feeling that this is, this project is too big for this particular parcel of land. And if we could reduce the number of units, then you're going to naturally reduce the number of additional cars on these small streets.
Fair enough. And I see the trips that is, I see that from, it's going from 125 to almost 1,800 trips per day. So yes, there is a significant increase. And I do look forward to hearing from the petitioner as to how we can address some of this valid concern. I have seen in neighborhoods where kids are walking to schools where there are no sidewalks. Certainly, there are neighborhoods that have Refuge Island, so it's a lot safer for kids to walk to school. So I know that could be part of the solution, but I would like petitioner to come up with the solutions here to address pedestrian safety concerns, because there are, these are valid concerns. We got to make sure that kids are able to walk to school safely. I see Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, do you want to address this, or you can address it later?
Happy to engage on that. There may be some opportunities, activity from the school to the rear of the site to take people totally around this development. Happy to talk about that.
Thank you. That could be part of our follow-up report. And I'd like to follow up with you, Mr. Brown, afterwards on tree canopy and height issues that some of the speakers had brought up, and those are valid concerns that needs to be, need to be addressed. That's all I have. Thanks.
If I may, this is Michael Wickline with Design Resource Group, the traffic engineer for the project.
Mr. Wickline, no, you can't not comment on this unless there's a specific question. And so we're trying to follow our rules and be consistent on this. And so our next, I want to recognize Ms. Johnson next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address something that our colleague, Mr. Bakari, was saying earlier. And I appreciate his attention to the macro issues and being willing to discuss strategies that would help with our problem and our infrastructure. I think there are some strategies that would help us, and that's through impact fees and inclusionary zoning. And those are two items that perhaps he, as the Republican, can work with the Republicans at the state level, because those are not allowed here in North Carolina. So if our state law would change and we could have impact fees where the developers added a, something to an impact fee for all of the development, it would help us to improve the infrastructure. Or inclusionary zoning, which will require that there's affordable housing in our development, in the developments, that it will be required. So I appreciate your comments tonight about the political will. I think that perhaps you and Mr. Driggs might have some influence in helping us.
Ms. Johnson, we're talking about the specific rezoning. Do you have?
No, no, Mayor, we had a whole discussion about CMS and the CMS policy and all of that, so.
We didn't have a discussion, excuse me, we did not discuss. She said she'd take it offline, and I said we should not misrepresent a person. And I just want to make sure we're following our rules about the hearing right now.
Perhaps this is something that the Intergovernmental Relations Committee could take up. So thank you. And then I did have a question for Mr. Wickline regarding this rezoning.
I'm calling Raleigh right now, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Bakari, please. Ms., what is your question, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Mr. Wickline was giving his input on the rezoning and the, I think it was the traffic. So I wanted to ask him if he had any input regarding the traffic improvements for this specific rezoning.
Mr. Wickline?
Yes. This is Michael Wickline with Design Resource Group. Just want to preface this with saying that I've been involved in the area, actually my firm and myself who completed the study for the public site. Also, the traffic engineer onboard for all CMS schools, usually any new school or any redevelopment of a school, we also handle those. So very familiar with these type of sites and CMS sites. And I just wanted to kind of talk about improvement-wise, from a vehicular standpoint, the vehicular traffic that was generated by the site and analyzed didn't necessarily the, you know, show the typical impacts that CDOT would require for vehicular mitigation. But as a part of the traffic study we completed that was not required, CDOT did make recommendations for additional pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Greenwich and Randolph Road, which included getting the crosswalks and ramps up to ADA specs and including, you know, the audible push buttons for anyone that may be visually impaired, those sorts of things. I do think that there could be other opportunities for some additional pedestrian improvements throughout the neighborhood that we could discuss with the neighbors to see where an appropriate location for something like that would be. Ultimately, that would have to be vetted and approved by CDOT to be implemented, but happy to have those discussions and kind of lead the front in those conversations with CDOT to try to get something like that implemented, so that, you know, the pedestrian safety or the neighbors feel like the pedestrian safety is addressed, because what we like to attempt to do in these situations is, we can't just think about traffic in a traffic study. We need to think about all modes of traffic, and pedestrians are one, especially this close to school and to shops and to restaurants and those sorts of things. So we'll try to get looped up with everyone in the neighborhood and try to address those concerns and find some type of reasonable solution that gives everyone comfort, that they're going to feel safe walking through their neighborhood to the shops, to the school, and the frontage along the site.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
I want to do a follow-up to Ms. Johnson, because you, Mr. Wickline, you said that, you know, you would take into consideration, and I heard this being discussed as a three-minute, 10-minute neighborhood. And so the question that I would have is, how far does that design extend? Because the, you have Colwick, and you have the schools, and then you have Randolph Road, which has very little crosswalks, and we know from the amount of traffic on Randolph Road, it's a major thoroughfare for our city. So I don't know what those boundaries are, and I think Mr. Bakari said that you would, I have an idea and a sense of what you're going to be able to make concessions on, and I think that that is one area that ought to be applied. So if Ms. Johnson, that's a follow-up to include with Ms. Johnson's from my perspective. And now we have Mr. Winston.
Yeah. One thing we can help with doing that is not to improve any more drive-throughs on Randolph Road. That would certainly help the pedestrian traffic. I wanted to answer one of the questions, the question that Ms. Isel posed. This is something that we are actually dealing with in Intergovernment, Intergovernmental Relations Committee. This was one of our main policy, our main policy actions, is that we keep asking these questions, and why don't we have policy where we're working with the county and school board? Because we really don't have a place where we, as policymakers, can work with each other to create those comprehensive and/or consolidated approaches to policy. We all know as. We all know as city council members, it is very... Getting used to land use and understanding the many different policies and policy subject areas related to this, it's hard enough when we do... To get into this office and work with entire departments, even with all the resources that we have. It's kind of disingenuous to believe or think that school board members or county commissioners would be able to understand the land... Our land use processes and be able to give... Create policies that cross-pollinate with our processes. When we are talking, as we have been in conversations with our colleagues on the county commission and the school board, they don't understand our land use processes. And so we are in the process of trying to figure out an approach that allows us to sit down at the table to come up with some more of those comprehensive processes. Right now is directed with the county, but we think that approach will allow us to really start at the top and then expand that table if and when we are able to come up with that. So to the mayor's point, there are many other people within the staffs of these organizations that might have opinions or that might have concerns or can weigh in once we are able to have conversations like this and ask questions. But the fact is that there is no policy-level arena for that to actually happen. But city council is actively working to create that. My question for the petitioner would be, are you able to comment on what the mix of bedrooms in this unit is so we can, you know, I guess, perhaps an idea of the types of what kind of access these families will have, different types of families will have to these living situations in these 10-minute neighborhoods that are amenitized in this way? I do not know the unit mix. I assume it is not a number of large bedrooms, large number of bedrooms. If there's someone on the development team that wants to respond on the unit mix, I'll let them do that. If not, I'll... Thank you, Marissa.
Yeah, sorry. Hi, Marissa Thompson. Yeah, we're looking at a mix. Again, the design is still in process, but it looks to be about 10% studios, 60% to 65% one bedrooms, and about 25% two-bedroom units.
So I think these... When we are talking about density, and I know we really have to be careful to talk about land use, but when we have to find a way to talk about multifamily in a way that provides a home for families, people that would need to live in a place that would be close proximity for their children to walk to school, in close proximity to bring groceries home as they get off the bus, as they come home from work. And I don't think we've been able to broach that conversation effectively. I know we talk about amenity areas, but sometimes we may want to talk about lack of amenity areas to leverage more bedrooms so that there is a better mix of people, of housing types, that is actually in these multifamilies. Because if multifamilies are only suitable for individuals or single roommates, you know, then we're also not matching the goals of a diversity of housing choice. So let's make sure that we're having that full conversation, and it is serving our community in attaining the goals and not in just name only. So I think we do have some work to do, but I think we have some really good bones to find a common ground approach that really does help us get to those goals, if the petitioner is willing to do so. If you feel free to comment if you'd like.
No, I mean, just that, you know, I agree, and we're willing to, you know, take a look and come to a compromise with the neighborhood and, you know, try to make this the best quality project that we can, so...
All right, thank you. I'd like to just ask, if you bear with me, a couple of things, particularly the scope around what... How far this project extends when we talk about it being walkable. The other thing I'd like for the staff to do, I think Mr. Brown said affordable units, and I'd like to figure out what that means, if the staff could follow up with Mr. Brown on that. The other thing that I would like to say is, I think the staff ought to pull up the rezonings that we had with Publix, as well as the redo of the school. When we did that, we had a lot of significant improvements in the walking for the school and the neighborhood was really important. And I want to ask CDOT to really... I'm not sure how this is done, but Colwick is not very big. I mean, all... Many of us that are familiar with that street, when you start talking about grocery deliveries, buses, and all of that, I'm not quite sure how that works because you can back up to the light on Randolph by the bank, or you come out and you take your life in your hands trying to turn onto Randolph Road, right across from the fire station. So I think that this can't be one that's kind of like, well, okay, we're looking at this number of acres in the middle of this without consideration for what is the... What are we really saying when we talk about this being a neighborhood or a walkable neighborhood? When it has a walkable school? And I don't know the impact, but I still think that when we did the discussion on the school site a couple of years back, we talked about how they would stack those buses. And I don't know if that's working or if it is inconsistent with what we asked to be done, or whether you just live with it or not, wherever it has landed. But this isn't something in this area that we haven't all talked about. And again, it's one of those things. We did set some qualifying rules in two decisions that we should not ease up on or ignore that we have done to make this neighborhood as successful as it is. And we can talk about the school policies and try to get additional information, but I don't think development is going to slow down for us to determine what our priorities are as opposed to what the school's priorities are unless they actually naturally integrate. And I haven't seen that come about yet. Sometimes we're asking people to do difficult things when their priorities are not consistent with what we're asking them to do. And I think we have to figure that out. And I'm glad that the Intergovernmental Group is having those meetings and having that conversation. But this decision's going to come a lot faster than those conversations will be to be resolved, so... So with that, I think, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And I wish we didn't have to do roll call, but we do because we have to do it as long as we're under the order. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Wat... I'm sorry, Ms. Watlington's off. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Ms. Ashmira has logged off.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, so with that, we have met our time limit for the number of petitions that we're going to see. Thank you all for coming. If you've heard, if your petition has been heard, thank you. If your petition has not been heard, this is a motion that's... I need a motion to open and continue the public hearings for the following rezoning petitions for the council business meeting on June 27th, which will start at 3:00 PM. We'll have to start it early. So we'll start it at 3:00 PM, and here we are. Item 40, petition 2021-258. Item 41, petition 2021-259. Item 42, petition 2021-260. Item 45, petition number 2021-268. Item number 46, petition 2021-270. Item number 47, petition 2021-271. Item number 48, petition 2021-272. I would like to... The clerk will move the speakers that have already signed up for these hearings to the new date, so you do not have to sign up again if you'd like to speak.
Doesn't count.
So moved.
Any additional speakers for these hearings may sign up by contacting the city clerk's office. Now may I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All right, we'll have a roll call vote on this, and so we'll start with any discussion of the motion. Any discussion? All right, so Monday, the 27th, at 3:00. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ash... Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
All right, so we're all set for Monday. Thank you all, and thank you for the participation. We're... The motion for adjournment is made, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.